Steve, can you do a roll call, please?
Certainly, I'll start with remote members, Mr. Williams.
President.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Ms. DeBachnik.
Here.
Mr. Bryce.
Here.
Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schulman.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
And Ms. Wells.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. It looks like both the alternates.
Recording in progress.
Will be seated today. We'll start out with 2024-43 SP slash cam fifty day street LLC one sixty five water street. An extension of time request for the robot robot competition venue. With an existing two story fifty four thousand square feet building. Is somebody here representing the?
Yes, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman Ayen. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy. Our address is ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. Before we proceed, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Jones to board. I hope that your time on the Planning and zoning commission is interesting and pleasurable. For the record, again, Liz Suchi, with me tonight is Ryan Sasslow. He is the Director of Operations for the National Avid Robotics League, which operates out of one sixty five water street, South Norwalk. We're before you for an extension of time to secure the zoning and building permits. As you may recall, back in September of twenty twenty four, we received approval for a special permit coastal site plan application to allow the structure, two story structure, to be used as a competitive robotics venue. We're almost there. We've secured almost everything we need to do. However, we're waiting on one sign off from one of the churches that will confirm that they have given us permission to use their site when we have our competitions. We've have submitted the application for zoning permit. We recorded the approved site plan on the land records. We approved, recorded this certificate special permit on the land records. So the only thing that's holding up the zoning permit is that one last confirmation from the church, which Ryan Sasslow has been diligently trying to secure from the pastor. We hope to get that any time now. After that, we do need to secure a building permit. So we do ask that you give us an extension of time, give us a little bit more time to finalize those approvals, finalize those permits, and then we'll be all set. It's the first applicant request for extension of time that we've submitted on behalf of the applicant.
Attorney Suchi, you're asking for a year?
If you give us a year, then we don't have to come back to you. I certainly don't hope that we we'd need a year. I'd like to say it could be done in six months, but we're kind of at the mercy of another entity that is aware of our requests, has consented to our requests, but we just don't have that final confirmation in writing from them. That's all.
Does anyone have questions?
I'll move approval of the request.
One second. Okay. Do we want to do a roll call for this?
Your decision. I think you can do it either way.
I think Diana would prefer roll calls tonight.
Sure. Minute take. Yeah, so that's fine. I'll start. And both alternates were seated, is that?
Yes, both alternates are seated.
Okay, I'll start. Ms. DeBachnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Your names.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move on to public hearings. The first one is twenty twenty five dash forty nine SP Enrico R Constantini Esquire two eighty four New Canaan Avenue. Request to modify special permit number twelve dash sixteen to extend the area of a previously approved contractor's yard and change the stormwater management. Continuation of public hearing report recommendation.
Good evening. My name's Eric Bernheim. I'm an attorney at FLB Law. We're located at thirty three Riverside Avenue in Westport. Rick Constantini was my former partner. He's left the firm and gone to one in Hartford, so I'm taking over on this matter. We did prepare a PowerPoint for for tonight. With me, I have Mr. and Mrs. Penna, as well as their site manager, John Torrielli. Should you have any questions for any of us? We also have Brian Carey, who's controlling my my PowerPoint for me now from Land Tech, and Steve Haas. I don't know if he, I don't see him on the screen. I don't know if he logged in.
I am here.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, as you said, Madam Chair, we're here for two eighty four New Canaan Avenue. It was a previously approved contractor's yard, and we're seeking to modify this. Brian, if we can go to the next slide?
Do you want to ask him to flip back to where we received the full slide view? Is that possible? Is that what you think?
Thank you. Do you want to reduce the the speakers there, Brian? Thank you. All right, so we're here for A.J. Penna, Vinnie Penna and his wife, for more than six decades have served Connecticut, specializing in underground utility excavation, installation, repair. The majority of their calls are emergency repairs, when power goes out, water mains need to be replaced or fixed, sewer mains, so on and so forth. On average, they receive over six hundred emergency calls per year. So that's almost two a day that they're responding to when, as I said, power goes out, water's an issue, sewer's an issue. And I put a quote in here from one of that Connecticut House of Representatives, Gil Lavial, saying, A.J. Penna performs essential services for Norwalk and for the greater Norwalk. If you've ever been involved in a wastewater backup, you want it to fix it quickly. That kind of sums up what they do. They they have to respond within two hours of a call from Eversource, Aquarion, their taxing water district in Norwalk. Any WPCA sewer issues, they have to respond and be there within two hours, meaning from the time the phone rings to when they're on site, they have to be there within two hours, whether it's at twelve noon, twelve midnight, or two AM. They are who our utility providers and our public servants call when there's an emergency in town that needs to be addressed quickly. They were also on site when the I ninety five bridge caught on fire, helping with that, with the utility work on that, and I ninety five was shut down. So just to give you a little bit of a background of who they are and what they do. The next couple of slides are just, you know, several newspaper headlines, I'll say, as to what they've done over the past just few years, really. But they've been doing this for for six decades in Fairfield County, Norwalk, Westport, Fairfield, so on and so forth. I won't bore you with all of these, but whenever there's a water main break or a street closure due to a sewer backup, or, as I said, the I ninety five bridge fire, they were on site preparing it, and they and John just told me that their crews are out currently at three different emergencies all over Fairfield County that are going to take probably twenty four to thirty six hours to fully resolve. The next page is also another just list of some additional newspaper headlines of jobs that that A.J. Penna had to respond to. So next slide is why are we here? They're operating, they they were operating a contractor's yard near the Walk Bridge. Historically, they'd been there for a couple of decades. That site was taken part of the Walk Bridge project, and the solution proposed by the state and the city was for A.J. Penna to purchase two eighty four New Canaan Avenue. So in twenty seventeen, a special permit was approved, allowing them to operate a public utility private contractor's yard at two eighty four New Canaan Avenue. And just again, another quote from one of the articles from Mr. Penna saying, I'm grateful to the city. I'm grateful to the state of Connecticut. If they had to take our property, which he didn't want to have happen, he didn't want to be in this location. He said, this was our best choice. Now we're going to be able to serve our community. We're going to be able to serve the city of Norwalk in the capacity that we've done for the past ten years. That was that was a quote from about seven years ago, so that should be sixty years now that they've been serving the city of Norwalk, doing essential emergency type work for all of the citizens of Norwalk. Unfortunately, after that original approval, it became very evident very quickly that the site was not designed as efficiently as it should have been. So that's why we're we're here tonight. We're we're revising, proposing to revise the original plan, which had significant operational issues. This new plan allows for better circulation for the applicant's vehicles. It's relocating the current, the existing earth bins, and they'll be serving a dual purpose. They will have dust suppression systems as well. The dual purpose is to store their earth materials that's required for all of their jobs, but also to serve as an acoustical barrier to the adjacent neighbors, now that we've been on the site for a period of time and heard their concerns. That acoustical barrier will be approximately thirteen feet of what we call mafia blocks, very large concrete blocks that are kind of like Legos that'll be stacked on top of another, and then another eight foot wooden fence. I believe it's an inch and a half thick wood of wood fence on top for a total of twenty one foot fence on top of the acoustical barrier. These modifications don't change the scope of the previous approval. It was always going to be a public utility contractor's yard for this intended purpose, nor does it adversely impact any wetlands. We've gotten inland wetlands approval, which Brian Carey will go into more detail on. This project has also received sign off from other municipal departments that Brian will go in, go into on. So Brian, can we go to the next slide? So here's an aerial photo of the current site. It's somewhat, the the material bins are somewhat different than this right now, as many of you saw on the site walk, but that's essentially the the aerial view, and we're showing one of the closest houses to our site in this measurement. So it's approximately five hundred feet. It's about four hundred ninety nine feet to the house from our active site in about two hundred and sixty three feet, I believe it is, from the property line to their to their house. The next slide, you can see this was the original approval. You'll notice that the earth, that the material bins were on on the lower side of the map there, and there were some Conex storage bins that were also proposed for the the pipe materials and the construction materials that do not need to necessarily be covered. So we're we're asking for relief from from having to have those Conex bins for multiple versions. One is just impractical to to put these pipes inside of Conex metal bins. It also is going to create even more noise if we have to slide the materials in and out of those. So there's also a, Brian, can you go over the above grade detention basin with your pointer? So we're proposing to move that underground. That's been approved by the inland wetlands, and that allows for more active site area that would allow for better circulation for Mr. Penna and his team. So we can go to the next slide. Brian? And I'll just very quickly show you this because Brian's going to spend a great more time on on the detail of it, but you can see the underground stormwater system that's being proposed. We've relocated some parking for construction vehicles in the such above that. There's a shaded area on the left side of this active site area there that's going to be proposed for 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 the outdoor storage of the pipes and the construction material that's not earth material. You can see the 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 bins on the the northernmost side of the site where the acoustical burial barrier will go, and then also our sifter location, which is going to be slightly different when you, when Brian goes through it after some conversations with your acoustical engineer. So our next slide, talk about noise reduction. Steve Haas is our acoustical engineer. He'll spend a great more time detail on this, but I think a couple of points are worth stating before he gets gets his opportunity. Based upon his expert review, he he has stated opined that a twenty one foot acoustical barrier is more than sufficient to reduce the noise levels to below the noise code, the city of Newark noise code. That was the condition imposed upon us originally was to make sure that we comply with the Norwalk noise code, which says that the decibel levels need to be below forty five decibels during the daytime, or I believe it's fifty five during the daytime, forty five at nighttime at the property line. So we're also implementing an operations and maintenance plan, which Brian Carey will detail so that we can resolve some of these noise concerns administratively with better site operation. And the sifter operations will not take place until no earlier than eight AM and only be operated until five PM. So eight AM to five PM when necessary, which is usually a few times a week at the at the most. And the reason we're doing that is because the ambient noise from the Merritt Parkway will be will be greater at that time. So all of those will mitigate the limited residual levels. You can see this chart on the screen now, which shows the levels without the barrier per Steve Haas's report, and then with the barrier, all of which are below the city of Norwalk noise ordinance. However, except for the slamming of tailgates, and Brian will get into greater detail as to how we will prevent the slamming of tailgates in the future. The next slide is really just to show that previously, the the neighbor's attorney sent an email asking us during the conservation hearing to provide a twenty five foot sound wall. Today, I saw very shortly before the the hearing that there was a request for fifty foot sound, forty, I'm sorry, forty foot sound wall. So I don't think it's based on any expert testimony or the such. Our expert and I believe your expert agree that twenty one foot sound wall is is sufficient, provided it's located in the right spot. Part of the O and M plan will be that our our company owned vehicles, as well as the subcontractor vehicles, will be retrofitted with broadband, self adjusting, backup alarms, and replaced tonal devices. The O and M plan will require the onsite supervisor to enforce a no tailgate slamming policy, will place signs throughout the site. There could be suspensions of employees or termination of subcontract contracts if if they do not satisfy, if they do not abide by those. And our sifter operations, as I said, will begin no earlier than eight AM. So that's the conclusion of our noise reduction report, which with this noise barrier, we clearly exceed what's required of us from the Norwalk noise ordinance, and we comply with it. I also want to point out that the the law, the noise ordinance has exclusions, both the Connecticut and the city of Newark noise ordinance have have exclusions for emergency type work as well as impulse sounds. And because we are an emergency public utility contractor, it's our position that we are excluded from compliance with the Norwalk noise code as well as the state code. Nonetheless, we want, we want to be good neighbors. We want to solve this issue. We want to be here for another six decades, serving the city of Norwalk. So we are proposing these these, the sound barrier and these mitigation efforts in an effort to 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 resolve the concerns of the neighbors, even though we believe we are fully compliant with the original condition, which is we have to comply with the city of Norwalk noise ordinance, because every job that we respond to is a emergency due to a water main break or utility outage. We we are excluded from compliance with those decibel levels. So I think next, unless there's questions for me initially, I'll turn it over to Brian Carey at Land Tech to walk you through the site plan.
Good evening. Brian Carey, professional wetland scientist with Land Tech. I've been working on resolving the violations for Pena since they were since they were ordered. We've gotten through all of the wetlands issues that were on site. We did get approval back in April and March of last year. Just a quick update, a little bit of housekeeping. Since the last meeting, you did approve the restoration plan. All of those plants have been installed to date. We didn't waste any time doing that. I know there is some consternation from some of the neighbors saying that we don't do what we say. Well, I just want to let you know that that has been done, and conservation is in the process of reviewing that. I'm just going to share my screen real quick. So the major change we're asking for is really related to the site layout. Functionally, when we looked at this and talked with Penna, we wanted to come up with a global solution to the the operations of the of the site that, number one, benefited the neighbors from a sound perspective and a nuisance perspective, but also really benefited the operations and the site so that we aren't back here in a year or less, you know, trying to mitigate these problems. This is a lot of cost to implement this plan. Initially, when they moved in, the operations moved in here in two thousand sixteen, it was kind of rushed in from a from an implementation standpoint, and after years, we've really taken a good look at this, and we're just trying to correct some systemic issues on the property that have come out over time. The one, the first one being, previously, there was an above ground detention basin that was that was approved for the location in this area of the property, if you can see that. Can you see the the site plan that I'm sharing? Yeah, okay. So we have, we have, we've actually put that system underground. For two reasons. First, obviously, because space is limited on the property. But number two, functionally, it's a better stormwater system. It will, it will work better with less operation and maintenance. The previous, the previous detention basin would have required continuous maintenance from a standpoint of having to remove sediments that basically would be introduced into the detention basin from stormwater. This system actually functions, allows water to come into a single storm drain. Then it is treated through downstream defender, which is a hydrodynamic separator. And then it goes into two hundred and eighty nine concrete galleries that basically will will reintroduce the the surface water into the ground. And this is designed per the city of engineers' design standards. We did, as part of our previous previous inland wetland application, get sign off. They did, the engineering department did review and sign off on that on that transition between the above ground treatment system to the above, to the below ground. So we do think that this is a better design overall and will function better at the site. We were asked to provide an operation and maintenance plan as part of the not only as part of the inland wetland application, but as part of the zoning application that has been put into the record and is there for your review. This is the operation and maintenance plan. This will be put onto the land record, so will be become part of the land record title that become part of the title of the land record. So if and when the property were to ever transfer, this would go along with the deed if they were to to transfer the special permit. That being said, the the function of transferring the bins to this side of the property, as Attorney Bernheim stated, was really to build a wall that serves as two functions. One, it will be material bins that were previously located and approved for this part of the site. We're just shifting those north along the property border, but also to act as an acoustical barrier to rectify some of the complaints that the neighbors had and have presented. We we feel this is the long term permanent solution based on our professional experience and expertise. Everything else will be institutionalized through site restrictions. We did see the staff recommendation for the the staff recommendation for the motion to approve. I know, I know there was two that were given out, but we did look at the conditions for the motion to approve. We agree with all those conditions for the most part. We don't take any exception to those. I think that's important to say. This area of the site will be restored and replanted. Again, this restoration plan was approved by the Inland Wetland Commission. That being said, this blue area is the only thing that we are under appeal. The Wetland Commission asked us to limit the amount of disturbance in this area. We did take an appeal to that. So we may be back based on the expansion of the yard. That is to, that is to be seen in the future. So that's basically it. Again, we're trying to rectify some of the outstanding issues and and just seek your approval. I know we're going to go through the acoustic the acoustic discussion, but I am here for any questions to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Steve, do you want to walk us through your findings, please?
Absolutely. May I share, Brian?
Yes, let me just all set.
Good evening. I'm Steve Haas, Principal Consultant with SH Acoustics in Stamford, Connecticut. We have been involved in this property since July of twenty twenty three, when we were engaged to do a thorough noise evaluation for the site based on the concerns of surrounding residential neighbors. We came in and in twenty twenty three, performed a week long, long term noise monitoring study, and that resulted in determining that for the various operations that are normally occurring on the A.J. Penna site, that during the daytime, the sound levels were in compliance. For the most part, I'm going to leave out the reverse alarms, the backup alarms, as well as the tailgate slamming for a moment, and just talk about the general operation of the sifters with gravel, without gravel, loaders and and their operations and other truck noises, for instance. And for that matter, all of the operations at that time were found to be in compliance during the daytime, but not the nighttime. And as Attorney Bernheim stated, we are looking at a conservatively looking at the levels of forty five DBA during the daytime and fifty five DBA during the nighttime as well. So I'm sorry, reverse that, fifty five DBA during the day, forty five DBA during the nighttime. And we determined that with the exception of the alarms and the tailgate, we are in compliance. However, at the night nighttime levels, we were over by numerous values there. So we, in twenty twenty three, we evaluated the construction of a berm, but that was not approved. So recently, we were asked to look at a the twenty one foot high barrier that both Attorney Bernheim and Brian Carey have mentioned here. In graphic form, we're looking at the this block, this concrete block, mafia block type of wall from a thirteen foot high perspective to twenty one foot with the eight foot type of wall from a 13-foot-high perspective to 21-foot with the eight-foot wood fence on top of that. This wood fence will be a very heavy, dense, sealed fence using steel H channels to join and special sealant, exterior-grade sealant, to make sure that at all places, there's no chance for sound to basically escape between the two materials around the fences or between sections of what we call the tongue and groove type of fence. We'll work with AJ Pena very specifically on this to make sure that both parts of this 21-foot-high fence meet the acoustical performance, not just over the top of the fence, but through the fence itself. To make sure that especially with the wood portion, we're not going to have sound go directly through that fence and basically prohibit the noise values or the code values from being achieved in this particular situation. So with the barrier, we're looking at, if you look at this table, the average sound pressure level SPL at the neighboring property is essentially with the sifter, we're at in the 46, 47, 45 type of range with the loader. The reverse alarms and the tailgates will be addressed in various ways. And perhaps AJ Penna will talk about that. But we have made specific recommendations, starting in our 2023 report and continuing to our current 2025 report, that they substitute all of the traditional tonal alarms that most people hear that are the beep-beep type of alarms with what we call a self-adjusting backup alarm that is much less annoying, much less audible. It basically adjusts its volume based on the ambient noise level. So it really is providing the safety measures for people right around the vehicle that's backing up, but it does not travel anywhere near as effectively as the higher-pitched tonal type of traditional alarms. And they can assure you that they're exploring and have probably already implemented that on a number of their vehicles. Also, the slamming tailgate that proved to be significantly above the nighttime and daytime levels for sure. So they have put in measures to prohibit that based on our recommendations, to prohibit anybody from slamming tailgates on their vehicles in that regard. So taking those two values out of the equation, this is telling us that we are at both the Connecticut State Noise Regulation values for this particular type of emitter and receiver zone, as well as the City of Norwalk type of emitter and receiver evaluation. We have also been in communication with our colleagues at AKRF who are here on this call. And we understand that the barrier, they are concerned about the barrier having limited effect in certain directions. Right now, we believe that this barrier, the 21-foot-high barrier will have, meet all of the noise regulations in the areas. Brian showed the map of the barrier. Perhaps I can actually just go back to that, Brian. If you can show that again, I'll stop sharing because that's important to actually call. The barrier is essentially what we've determined with AJ Penna. This barrier is, the extent of it is pretty much as much as we can allow without encroaching upon the wetlands to the south and even to the northeast there. And we believe that this is the most practical way of achieving the noise regulations, especially in the areas where the sifter is located. If we can point to that sifter location there, we're pushing it as far toward the barriers as practical. We have a cell phone tower that we unfortunately cannot encroach upon. So that the sifter is one of the noisier, sorry, pieces of equipment that is in operation. But by pushing it as close to the 21-foot-high barrier as possible, we're really shielding a great number of residents, not just to the north and east, but based on the angle even to the south, southwest as well, sorry, north and west, but also to the southwest as well. We're shielding the noise of that emitter, of the sifter, all the way back to those neighboring properties. The closest neighboring property from the south side, well, from, okay, from the west side. Brian's ahead of me on the, that is approximately 300 to 350 feet away to the house itself. It's more like 300 to the property line where the noise was measured. And we have found that certainly looking at both the first floor and the second floor type of differential, considering what our colleagues have asked us about, we find that there is negligible difference with the 21-foot-high barrier. We've done the calculations to determine that between the property at the first-floor window level and the second-floor window level. And we would expect that as you get further away from that location, the angle, the differential between the noise impacting the first floor and the second floor would even be that much less. And so we, based in conversations with AJ Penna and Attorney Bernheim earlier today in response to the AKRF comments and discussions, that we would be looking at the possibility of adding perpendicular barriers on some of the bins based on where you see the walls there, Brian. If you can point to the 40-foot wall, not on the south side. There's a 40-foot wall that is right, right there to the, not the farthest one because that would block the bridge, but the one right there, that one, correct, where he is showing it. We're looking at the possibility of raising the height of that barrier as well. So that would even provide better line-of-sight blockage, occlusion essentially from any operations that are occurring in this northwest side, the western side of the yard, the AJ Penna yard. There would be more blockage from that particular barrier if we raise them. We're certainly, AJ Penna is certainly willing to raise that height of that barrier to match the rest of the barriers there. So I believe that that is all. In conclusion, yeah, we are confident that this particular solution with the barriers and the administrative controls will provide the necessary relief for the neighbors.
One last thing to sum up before we turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, is that the backup alarms are also exempt from all noise ordinances because they're ocean required as long as they are retrofit with that ambient noise adjustment as Steve Haas indicated. So those also are compliant with your noise ordinance. And I think that's all we have for now. We're happy to respond to questions or comments.
I have a question for Mr. Haas.
Yes.
The, you indicated that your calculation showed a negligible difference between first-floor noise and second-floor noise on that residence. And I wonder, we watched a rather, I thought, remarkable sound presentation several years ago for an apartment building that was being constructed next to the railroad tracks. And they used a laser from the sound source to the windows on the top floor of the building to determine how high the wall needed to be, the sound wall. Did you do something like that or is it just mathematical calculations?
It's a combination. We did not use lasers, but we certainly have the experience with our calculation methodology and the topography of the site. The AJ Penna site is approximately five foot above the nearest residential properties, according to the topography, the land topography. So that actually works in the favor of the barrier. The barrier is that much more effective when you're actually putting it closer to the source of the noise and your property is farther away. So we did the calculations, looked at the angular difference between the first floor and the second floor, which even in some of the larger houses is no more than a 10-foot differential between the first-floor windows on average and the second-floor windows on average. And we were determined that the decibel difference at various frequencies, we have to look at this at different frequencies, of course. And the decibel difference is very much negligible. It's within a decibel, maybe two at most of the reduction between the first floor and the second floor.
But don't you think that's kind of significant at night when things are quiet?
Decibel to two decibels is almost not even noticeable. And based on the fact that we are less than the noise code that we're looking at, I don't think it's significant, not with the, that's why we chose the 21-foot barrier to make sure that we're under the noise code enough where it's not going to be a disturbing factor. That's our goal is to make sure that you're not disturbed in the middle of the night here.
How much higher would the barrier have to be to make it not different?
It depends on where, how far your property is away. Okay, so the closest property there, the 300 to 350-foot property distance, it would probably, I would have to do the calculation exactly, but it would not need to be more than two to three foot higher to be able to be a zero difference based on what we saw with the 10-foot first floor to the second floor height differential and the calculations that we literally just did earlier today.
So I am assuming that the 21-foot barrier is done because the standard fence size is eight feet. Is that correct? Or maybe you don't know that?
That was not taken into our calculations. Our, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting code at all homes, all residential homes. And that is the number that we looked at. Because if you recall, we originally looked at a 20-foot berm, but that was not approved for reasons I'm not fully clear on, but Attorney Bernheim could fill us in on that. So we essentially knew that the 20-foot-high berm was going to solve the problem with meeting the code regulation. So when the berm got rejected, we switched to a fence of a similar height. And I think it was simply just a combination of the mafia blocks, which I believe AJ Penna already has in their possession that can go, be erected very quickly and certainly are even that much better than the wood fence, even though the wood fence that we're proposing will be completely fine in terms of the sound transmission through it as well as over it. We simply landed on the 21-foot height because of the the fact that it was similar to the berm that we already had analyzed originally.
Thank you.
Do you want to hear from our peer reviewer for the acoustical?
Yes, we do want to hear from the peer reviewer. Someone here from AKRF?
Yes, hi. My name is Dan Abadamarco. I'm a Senior Vice President in the Acoustics, Noise and Vibration Department at AKRF. And we did indeed peer review SH Acoustics reports on the noise from this site. And we, we agree with the recommendations for noise controls that were contained in that report. And our, some of our concerns and recommendations, which Steve mentioned in his discussion, pertain to more where exactly the barriers are located so that they will provide acoustical shielding in the direction, in all the directions needed for where the residences are relative to where work occurs. Since we were just discussing the height of the barrier, I certainly do not have any concerns about the 21-foot height. I think that is an appropriate height, given the, you know, all the reasons that Steve was just describing. So he did mention that we recommended consideration of some of those, I guess I would call them vertical, but the bin wall top fences. Because there is a residence on Carter, Carter Street that is, I guess I would say it's southwest of where the work activity occurs that we thought would benefit from additional shielding with, so sort of based on our sort of back check, there would be marginal code compliance at a second-floor window at that residence, sort of like right at the threshold of code, depending on exactly where the work would be occurring. But sort of extending a taller fence along one of those bin walls to provide a little bit of extra shading, we think would provide some, you know, additional benefits specifically for the residences in that southwest direction, some of which are closer to the work than those in the north or northwest direction. We also discussed with SH, some of the other, or we provided, you know, some additional comments. And so we haven't, I think, done like a full technical peer review of every, you know, assumption and all their calculations. So I don't want to represent that we fully reproduced their entire work. But you know, as far as the recommendations and conclusions, I think, you know, aside from the additional recommendation we just described, you know, we're essentially in agreement with those recommendations for controls.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Haas, I would say like, looking at the report, the kind of control for the impulse events, like the recommended control is essentially like a workplace policy. How effective are those policies in your experience? Like what percentage of the impulse events do they actually prevent?
That, that's a difficult one to answer from our perspective because it really does come down to the controls of the owners and the operators of the particular situation in this case. And so I think I would, I would leave that to AJ Penna to respond to because it's really, doesn't matter what other owners do. It's what AJ Penna plans to do and is doing in this case. And that's really all that matters in this case, in my opinion.
Thank you. I can address a little bit of that if you'd like. So first and foremost, impulse events have a higher decibel level for them to actually violate a noise ordinance. It's a much higher level than, than the regular usual noise. But we have spoken at length about this. And I think in our operations and maintenance plan that's been submitted to you, it goes into great detail about that. But we are posting signs about no tailgate slamming. We are going to impose penalties for people who do not abide by that. If they're an employee, they could be suspended, they could eventually be terminated. For subcontractors who we use regularly, we will, we will have in our contracts that we will, that we have the ability to terminate their contract if they're not abiding by it. So we're going to take every step possible to ensure that these impulse events do not take place as, as much as possible.
Hi, I have a few questions, sort of, I guess continuing on that line from the bottom up. Why do people slam tailgates and what do they need to do to not slam the tailgates?
We're going to bring our site manager up to respond to that because I've never slammed a tailgate in my life.
I am John Torioli, AJ Penna. So basically, it's usually done, you know, when they're pulling off the piles, they have a load of material on. And if they pull up too abruptly, what will happen is it will swing, the gate will swing closed. Sometimes it's a practice used when there's, you know, hard or frozen materials left inside. And also, you know, they'll do that to help to empty the rest of the body. So one of the things we, you know, we've also protocols would ask that improvise is that if they need to clean the body, we have shovels left, you know, at the, you know, at the work site. And they can actually go inside and just, you know, remove the stuff or leave it in the body until, you know, until a more appropriate time. And they can actually go inside and just, you know, remove the stuff or if leave it in the body until, you know, until a more appropriate time.
Go ahead.
Rather, so like a a particular operator, a driver is sitting there going, do I want to shovel this out manually? Or do I want to slam something closed? And that's the decision they're making?
I'm not necessarily, it's not always, it's not always conditional on whether his material is left inside. It's simply just is if if they pull forward more quickly than than they should. So it's just basically just, you know, it's just coming off the uh, the uh, coming out of the pile or pulling away in in a in a more gingerly way. Then do we get more quickly? So a lot of it has to do is just, you know, the the speed and and the care in which that it's done in. And then we work through, we work through that with uh, with training as well. We have an H R and training department with full time, uh, you know, health and safety officer. And we were working with our teams by educating them and training them as well.
And how will you know if a particular operator slams a tailgate? Is there?
We, we, we have a presence, we do have a yard manager who is present in the yard. I mean, you know, I can't say that we have uh, we have people that are present, you know, other people can hear it. We have supervisors on site and that would be the way we would detect it.
Okay, and over the last seven years that there have been these complaints, did you implement any of these um H R responses previously and training and having people tell operators, hey, you just slammed the tailgate, here's a warning?
We, we have, it gives you warnings, we've had posted signs previously, um, and just we've really, you know, stepped up that sort of initiative.
And has that worked?
I believe it has, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then these questions may not be for you specifically, but um when complaints came in over the last seven years and then when uh whoever spoke earlier did this sound study in twenty twenty three recommending the ambient backup noise things. Did you actually install the ambient backup noise things at that noise things at that time? And have you already required subcontractors you work with to use these ambient backup noise things? Or is this a new practice you intend to implement? And if so, why didn't you implement it previously?
So uh, previously we implemented a, you know, a different sort of a beeping noise, there there are a white noise style. The new, the latest recommendation now is one that basically adjusts for the ambient noise. And we are in the process of retrofitting those with with our fleet, along with also a most common uh, uh, subcontractors. So it's a slightly different variation. We went away from the 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 tonal or the beeping noise, uh, this, and that was sort of this uh duck quacking, if you will, or pushing, I don't know kind of how to describe it. And uh, the the sort of the improved version of that. And I think the the acoustical engineer could explain to the night, but basically measure the ambient noise and only makes it as loud as it needs to be. Uh, whereas, you know, the ones that were originally retrofitted, you know, we're in a kind of a steady tone or or uh decibel level.
So this is a new technology that you couldn't have implemented previously?
One that personally wasn't aware of, you know, we're, we're learning this as we, as we go along. So I don't know that, uh, you know, we're taking the recommendations as we, as we learn about them and and implementing.
Thank you. And when the special permanent, when the special permit condition of must comply with the noise ordinance was agreed to in twenty seventeen, did you tell the city that it's your position that the noise ordinance does not apply to you?
I, I don't know if anybody here tonight, um, other than Mr. Penna was present on that night. I didn't represent them at that time, um, so um, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay, um, and then lastly, just more of a comment from your presentation. It seems like you're saying that other than all the loud noises um that aren't in compliance, you are currently in compliance. And I find that that framing somewhat disturbing.
That we're currently currently in compliance with our original approval, is that your question?
You said that you're in compliance, you you pulled up something on the screen that said we're in compliance if you ignore half of the data on the screen. And so I just feel like it feels disingenuous, it doesn't feel like ownership of the issue. But that's just me, thank you so much for the answers to the questions, particularly to the site operator.
I have a follow up question on tailgates, or sorry, Tammy, I know you've been talking for a while. What uh, what type of vehicles are these tailgates attached to? What, what are we talking about? Dump trucks, okay, triaxles, okay. Um, is, so I have some other questions. So uh, does this proposal contain an expansion of using the yard and uh of the site?
So the the expansion, it's a little bit of a agreement to disagree with staff, I guess. Um, but it it's the area that was the above grade detention basin that was originally approved. Since we're burying it, we're asking to be able to utilize that as active site. Our position was that it was always part of the active site, it was just used for drainage. Now that we're putting that subsurface, we should be able to continue to use it as part of the active site. Staff said it's an expansion, um, so if they consider an expansion, we're asking for an expansion.
Okay, and then um similarly, there seems to be um a few other, in addition to the amount of land used on the site as a form of expansion. It seemed like the size of the bins has also increased. Do you have a sense of um what the uh previously approved size of the bins were versus today?
Um, maybe Brian can try to do some quick math on that. I don't think it's significantly different, but the the important um thing is I I do believe they're slightly bigger. But one of the reasons why we made them as big as they are is so that we could get that full acoustical barrier. So we felt like it made sense. Also, one thing that I don't think we've harped on too much is when those bins are full and they're very regularly full, that's going to add even more density to that acoustical barrier because there's going to be earth materials that are piled up in there and are serving as almost a berm like we had originally wanted to do. There was a question as to, you know, why the berm wasn't done or a comment about that. Uh, when we proposed that to the inland wetlands conservation commission, they uh, they were adamantly opposed to it and told us to get rid of it. So that's why the berm wasn't done, but we felt that this acoustical barrier um with the block walls, uh, it it solved two problems and it will effectively act as a berm also as the, as the bins are are full and um full of earth material, it will be effectively an acoustical berm there as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think the takeaway from the the bin, while they are a bit bigger, the reason being is that we're creating a wall. Um, so it's not necessarily the amount of material that's being stored on site as it was as much of us trying to address the sound issue by building that wall. If you look, I I can pull up the old plan, but if you look, I mean, it's a negligible amount of difference in the total size of the bins that are there now and what we're proposing.
Yeah, it, it seems from looking at the um previously approved site plan to um what's today. It does seem that it is a significantly longer, uh, and in some areas much deeper uh set of bins. So it did seem like there was uh more.
Yeah, the, again, the reason for that was not for more material storage, it's just a function of trying to meet the requirements of the sound engineer and trying to um create a uh, a linear wall um that basically was able to implement their recommendations.
Um, also in the comparison of site plans, I I noticed in in the new um proposal, there's an addition of a uh screener. Is that accurate? That that was on in the prior?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and then similarly, there was a outdoor storage area. I think you summarized this a little bit earlier and that is instead of having the, I forget the name of the container.
Conex bins.
The Conex bin.
Right, I mean, those are, Conex bins are essentially like the tractor trailer metal bins. And what we store out there, as most of you saw on the site walk, is is pipe underground, you know, pipe that eventually ends up underground or conduits and the such. And to put those into these bins, we would have to slide them in, drag them out. It'd be a lot of metal on metal. I mean, my thought is that it would sound a lot like slamming a tailgate to try to put this, the, the, this, this material in. Um, and since it doesn't matter if it gets wet or covered in snow or exposed to elements, we felt it would be better uh to just keep it outside, not in a Conex bin. Um, so we avoid that noise, but also, you know, we are proposing this twenty one foot acoustical barrier. So it's also going to be very adequately screened to where none, none of the neighbors are going to be able to see that part of the active site due to that barrier. So if the intent, and again, I wasn't there, if the intent was to ensure that the site was kind of neat and tidy so that wasn't a nuisance to neighbors, then I don't think that that should be a concern with the twenty one foot wall. And where, as Mr. Haas said, we're five feet above um where uh their, their property grade is. So uh, that's, you know, twenty six feet when, when I do my math. So we're, um, it'd be hard for them to see over those to see that material.
Any questions for them?
Thank you, sure, thank you. Um, I have a number of questions, they might not exactly go in order. Um, but I'd like to start by saying that um, I think some of Anna's questions about the beeping and the tailgate slamming are a major concern for the neighbors. And we're talking about dump, dump truck drivers at three A M. In the morning. I don't buy that they're going to back up slowly and think, oh gee, I'm going to wake somebody up. So that is a serious concern. Uh, all of us here have experienced a dump truck tailgate slamming and jumped out of our shoes, probably in the daytime, not when we're asleep at night. So my question is, how tall is a dump truck? How tall is the wall? Why wouldn't you go one or two mafia blocks taller? And then perhaps tilt the fence like when you're at a concert, an outdoor concert show where the, the fence actually tilts in to send the noise back down rather than out to the neighbors? And I also agree with um our peer review gentleman from AKRF that the houses that are the first on Carter Street, um, they need some noise attenuation as well. Those houses are actually closer to some of your bins. And I think they deserve to be addressed as well. Um, and you know, OSHA makes rules, but OSHA isn't people sleeping in their bedrooms and fight back, you know, say, listen, OSHA, this isn't practical. We, we need, I've heard that quacking beeping thing, the Amazon truck does that, it's going to wake people up. So we need to try to mitigate that. Um, and whatever suggestions you have, I think I'm, I'm really happy to listen to them.
Um, so to to start with the the backup alarms, um, they're required, they're, they're safety mechanisms. Um, we will do our best to, you know, and with this new circulation, we're hopeful that there's less backing up, less maneuvering of the trucks on site because currently the, the bins are in the middle of the site and everybody's dodging one another. We're hopeful with this new site uh layout that the circulation will be better so we can avoid backing up as much as possible. It's inevitable to happen, right? But we're hopeful that, that this will work better and there'll be less backing up. Um, we can't um appeal that to. Well, we can't, we can't appeal that to OSHA. Um, there is a reason why it's exempt from noise ordinances because it's required and it's a safety mechanism. Um, the uh, the dump trucks are twelve feet tall. So the wall is thirteen feet with mafia blocks and then another eight feet of wall. So it is a foot above where uh the highest point of the uh, of the dump truck. Um, and I believe um, it was, it was said, um, I believe by Mr. Haas that the, the homes on Carter Street uh AKRF proposed that, I believe on that first um, uh, thirty foot uh sidewall of the biggest bin on the site plan that we add the eight foot of fencing on top of that. So it'll be twenty one foot acoustical barrier there. Um, and we're agreeable to do that as a condition of approval. Um, we can extend it there and that that would serve to uh as an acoustical barrier for the uh Carter Street homes.
Okay, thank you, I have a couple more. Um, but would you agree to making the barrier taller? For example, planning and zoning, FEMA has regulations about how high you have to be if you're in the flood zone and the city of Norwalk requires, requires a foot higher. I think in this situation, that you might want to make sure that the neighbors aren't coming back and complaining after you go to all of this work. So why not take the extra step? And I saw the new plantings, it's going to take a long time for them to really take hold and grow. And what about giving the neighbors some consideration and putting um a row of evergreens at the edge of their property because they're going to be looking at the back of this attenuation wall for many years until those plantings take hold.
It would include a row of screening plants, uh, evergreen trees in there, uh, black spruce. It's also a hard area to grow, um, some materials because it is wetlands and adjacent to wetlands. So we did try to do our best uh based on the density of the plantings in that area. And it, you know, within the years of growth, it should be, you know, it it should be screened from our site to the neighbors.
Well, I respectfully like to say that maybe the neighbors would like something right on the edge of their property. If they're not in the wetlands, they would be allowed to plant some evergreens. I know that there are distinctions between what you can plant in the wetlands and what's not. But that might go a long way to help mitigate the situation. And then.
Can I, can I address your, your request that the wall be slightly higher? That was one of your questions too. Um, I, I, I think we've done what our expert has suggested we do. And I believe your, your peer reviewer also agreed that the twenty one foot high wall is is sufficient. So that's what we based it on. Um, we feel like anything higher than that is, you know, um, just, it's not based on the experts um, uh, data and the such. So um, a twenty one foot high wall is a very tall wall.
Eric, if I can add to that, to address uh Tammy's question about the height of the trucks. Our analysis doesn't assume the source of noise at the ground level. We, we definitely assume the height of the truck going over the barrier. So the, the fact that we're attenuating as much as we are with the twenty one foot high barrier and the twelve foot high dump truck, for example, is is definitely part of the equation that we used here.
Right, and it, is there any uh acoustical reasoning in my thought about making it canted? Like when you go to a, an outdoor concert amphitheater or something?
I mean, they're, they're.
Send the noise back down?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not necessarily, because we're dealing with a lot of different frequencies, including low frequencies. It, it would have some small effect, but it will, it, it would be very, very difficult structurally, first of all, to create that. And, and number two, it, I think the, the benefit would be very minimal in, in what you're saying and what, what you would see from that. So I think it's really the, the point at the top of the wall is the really key factor here. Not that the fact that the wall is sending sound back at you. Because the same sound is still going to go over the top of a canted wall that it would over a vertical wall. Especially with the differential in height that we're talking about here.
And what's the average height of a residential home versus this twenty one foot wall? Second story house, two, two story?
Uh, yeah, I mean, on, on average, you know, two story, a second story window, we think on average is anywhere from twelve to fourteen feet off the ground, depending on how tall the windows are, of course, but.
Might be a little taller. Okay, um, I think those are my questions, thank you, Jim. Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Day, Diana?
Is there um, you know, supervisory, is there Pena supervisory personnel on site whenever there is activity on the site, either during regular working hours or off night and weekend hours?
No, I mean, is, no. Sorry about that.
Yeah, so no, there is ordinarily, it off, you know, off regular work hours is not supervisory staff that's, you know, in the yard, you know, off hours. The answer to that question is no.
So that would make control more difficult.
We're, we're doing, no, we're doing emergency work, there, there'll be, you know, a site supervisor, you know, on the site, not necessarily in the yard.
But there is someone on site. So when we're talking about control measures, trucks coming and going, slamming tailgates, there's always someone there from the company who's supervising the activities.
There's someone, yes, there's someone not necessarily on the site, but there is someone supervising activities. Yes, there is someone that's in charge of a project.
Where are they supervising from if they're not on site?
This, well, this, well, we saw, pardon me. Yeah, okay, let me, yeah, we talk about the site, we talk about where the, where the actual repairs are being made. Okay.
I think they're talking about, we're talking your property. Yep, yep, yep.
Right, they, no, in the middle of the night, there may not be someone else, you know, uh, someone else there.
Okay.
Slamming the tailgate. Um, on the weekend. To give, carry whatever. How do they know?
Is the dump, is the dump truck driver going to report camera herself for slamming the tailgate to be fined? If there's nobody there?
I'm, I'm sure we could put up cameras to see, uh, to monitor. And if we got a, if we got a complaint, um, we could check the, the video. And I, and I can tell you, you know, um, Um, you said, is a driver really gonna care if it's cold out? Well, when, when that driver loses his job and his friends. Um, know that somebody just lost their job because they allowed a tailgate slam, then yeah, I think people will. Um, people will start paying attention, so um, you know, is it going to be immediate? You're probably right, it's not gonna be immediate, but when somebody gets made an example of, then it will be taken more seriously. Um, and you know, Mr. Penna and John are prepared to, to do that if necessary.
Have there been disciplinary actions taken in the past regarding the tailgate slamming and such? Or is this a, just a proposed future uh, policy?
There hasn't been a policy that's been implemented where they get terminated if they slam. Um, where they get suspended and then, uh, and then they get terminated if, if they do it, so. Um, I can't speak to whether or not anybody's been fired for it in the past, but it is a proposal to address these concerns.
Just to follow up on one thing you said earlier, the impulse events, like, okay, I understand that they have a different decibel level. That decibel level is eighty decibels for impulse events in the city of Norwalk?
I believe so.
Yes, it is.
You know, I think it's also important to point out that this original approval that was obtained in twenty seventeen didn't have any of these. Acoustical barriers uh, as part of it. Um, so you know, we're, we're coming here to modify this plan and to, you know, quote unquote, expand the yard. Uh, above, you know, as far away from the neighbors as possible, as close to the um, uh, Merritt Parkway as possible. Um, but we are trying to make this site better with this proposal. Uh, and with the acoustical barrier, because the existing special permit that we have doesn't require any of that. Um, it's not a very workable, um, it's not a very workable. Site plan approval, but it's what we've got. Um, and I really think that what we're proposing with this twenty-one foot um, acoustical wall. Um, with the experts saying that they think it's efficient, we really have to give it a, give it a chance.
The original approval said must comply with the noise ordinance. And I think the, the implication there is that it's on the owner to do what needs to be done to comply with it. So that wasn't done. Either because from the very beginning you had no intention, not you personally, you weren't there, but they had no intention of complying because it didn't apply to them. Um, or because they waited till it got so bad that there was an actual violation issued in twenty twenty-four. But the assumption is that if you agree to follow a noise ordinance, you put whatever is in place. To allow that to happen, so now. You're looking at putting the things in place that might allow you to comply with the noise ordinance. So I just wanna be clear that like, even though the explicit things that you would have to do to comply with it weren't in the original one. It said comply with it.
We haven't received one citation from the police department that we didn't comply with your noise ordinance and they're charged with um, uh. Um, the oversight of the noise ordinance, so. I believe we have complied with it. I also believe we've complied with it because of the exceptions that are granted to us as emergency contractors. So um, we, we do intend to apply with it. We believe we have complied with it. We are receptive to the neighbors' um, plight of the noise and we're trying to make that better with this proposal.
Any other questions? You ready to go to the public hearing? Section.
Any other questions for me?
There are no other questions. We can move along to the public hearing. Maybe you'll have a chance to rebut. In our public hearings, we don't limit how long you can speak, but you can only speak once. So be sure to say everything that you need to say in the time that you're speaking. Um, we need to get your name and your address. We'll start with people who are here in the room and then move on to people who are online. Uh, is anybody here, does anybody here wish to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Come, come up to the, maybe form a little line. Okay, this is for nineteen days, we.
No, no, this is for the present application.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good.
Next one.
Yeah, anybody wish to speak for two eighty-four New Canaan now is the.
Can everyone at home hear me okay? Thumbs up that you can hear me. I hope everyone in the audience can hear me uh, okay as well here in the studio. Uh, for the record, my name is Jay Klein. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy. Uh, uh, really appreciate everyone's time uh, coming out this evening to hear this important matter. I'm here representing Mr. and Mrs. Peter Wilson, who are seated uh, uh, in the audience as well. And I believe will have some remarks uh, of their own. They're the owners of uh, neighboring property at one seventy-eight Parkinock Trail. Uh, partially located in New Canaan and also located in the city of Norwalk. Should also mention my associate, uh, Karina Aradondo is, is with me. She's been with our firm for a year or so now. And she will be logging into Zoom to share some images of materials that I'll be, I have handouts that I can share with all of you here uh, today. Uh, I mentioned that my clients, the Wilsons, live next door uh, to uh, Mr. Penn's property on New Canaan Avenue. Uh, but oftentimes it feels like the activity going on in that site is occurring on their, within their own backyard rather than next door to it. I know we provided you all with a letter uh, earlier in the summer when this hearing uh, opened. Um, and our concerns really remain the same, unfortunately. They haven't been satisfactorily addressed in, in all the time that this hearing has been pending. And they really, really boil down to repeated violations, well documented violations and not just. The approval that was issued in two thousand seventeen, not just the zoning regulations that control. Uh, of this public, public utility contractor yard use, but also quite frankly, a violation of. Uh, of trust that can and really should exist between two neighbors, whether they're residents or, or, or commercial uh, businesses. And we something, we think that's something that is of paramount importance when you have a special permit application pending before you. Karina, I don't know if you're able to um, start sharing your screen yet, but just give me a high sign when you're able to.
Are you a participant or are you attending?
Okay, there we go. Perfect. Thank you, Brian. I'm, no. Um, in any event, uh, uh, as you all know, and I think as was alluded to earlier, this. This use was originally approved back in two thousand seventeen. Mr. Pennant came to all of you seeking a couple of applications to be approved. Site plan application, a special permit application and an amendment to the zoning regulations or a text change application. And what you see is the result of the uh, uh, first two, the site plan special permit application. You clearly see in Karina, maybe you can, uh, cause I, this is just a photo that I took with my phone. Uh, just below her cursor, you see the uh, approved uh, material storage bins that have been referenced. Um, I think there was a question about what's the size that was approved back then. I had it, it's, it's a little over, I think it's four thousand some odd square feet. May call it four, forty-five hundred, just, just dumb lawyer math. Um, or this lawyer, I won't, I won't speak for, I won't throw to Eric, he's in the same boat as me here. You also see parking spots clearly identified. You see uh, a proposed water retention quality pond that was mentioned earlier. Uh, two, uh, but everything uh, uh, in order as it was contemplated, as it was. Uh, uh, promised to not just my clients, but to your predecessors on the commission at that time. Um, I also mentioned that while. The applicant was seeking the site plan special permit approval, they were also seeking an amendment to the zoning regulations that would allow this use. Because back in two thousand seventeen, it wasn't entirely clear that you could have a publicly, public utility contractor's yard. In what was then the RA three or, or, in, in the, in the single family residential zoning that existed at that time. So, and the triple A residence, I'm so sorry, that existed at that time. Um, and so the applicant proposed a regulation that would help control or. Presumably control this use in a sensitive neighborhood. In a, in a neighborhood that's sensitive to an industrial type activity. And as part of the text change that the applicant proposed and was approved by this commission. The applicant proposed a number of controls, uh, in addition to allowing the use in the triple A residence zone. They uh, proposed a requirement in the regulation stating that all ba- backup alarms on vehicles would be disabled. They proposed a control in the regulation limiting the height of material stored. That the materials be stored in environmentally safe manner that doesn't impact neighbors. And they also very clearly outlined hours of operation that would be permitted on the site, notwithstanding uh, documented. Uh, uh, emergencies. Um, so that's all important because, you know, we can put the, the, the noise ordinance in all sides. Certainly this operation is not exempt from the zoning regulations. The applicant proposed several controls to be installed into your zoning code that they uh, purported to be willing to live with. These standards are in your new zoning code that was adopted, however many years ago it was now today. So all of these still apply to a public utility contractor yard on the site. Um, in the course of seeking that approval, that original approval, uh, there were several back and forths with the applicant and. And your staff, I believe, uh, Ms. Dory Wilson, you know, who used to be a, a member of the land use department was part of their review of that application. Um, and in response to staff comments, the applicant provided a memo that addressed a number of. Specific issues raised back in two thousand seventeen. Uh, back in two thousand seventeen and, and two thousand sixteen when the application was pending. Uh, and this is a copy of the memo that was proffered by the applicant. Backup alarms came up again in the applicant's own word. These will be turned off to reduce noise uh, uh, felt by residential areas. Uh, the applicant also affirmatively stated that there'd be no screening, no processing of any kind to take, uh, taking place on the property. Uh, and also made several representations about abiding by specific hours of operation, number of vehicles located on the site. Uh, and that uh, they would come to this commission if any changes to the site plan that you approved, your predecessors approved. Were proposed. Of course, not all of that has come to pass and that's part of what brings us here this evening, right? There's a notice of violation, the here, and the, and the record for this application and. Uh, 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 part of this application, a big part of it is to correct those violations. Um, back in August, we shared with you some images showing, and I think we all, we can bring those up again if you like, but I don't know that we need to repeat ourselves. The expansion of the contractor's yard be, be, uh, compared to what was approved back in two thousand seventeen and what is there today. I have an image and we'll upload, I think we've uploaded everything to the online system already, but we have a visual here where you can see. Ex, uh, material being stored outside of that, 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 that storage bin area that was called out in the two thousand seventeen site plan. Literally material spilling outside of that called out area. Uh, I think someone asked earlier, but, and I have the numbers here written down. In two thousand seventeen, there was forty-five hundred square feet of storage area approved. The application that's before you tonight is seeking to, it, it, it's a big expansion, I think. I don't think it's, it, it's over, it's doubling it. It's more than doubling it. It's now, there'll now be ten thousand three hundred and ten square feet of storage area, material storage area, if this plan is approved. I respectfully ask that before we allow the applicant to expand the use in that capacity. That we should see proof that they can comply with the area that you called out, uh, that you approved back in two thousand seventeen. Let's ensure that they can live with your conditions before we give them more latitude to do more on this site. Um, another issue, certainly we talked about in, in the notice of violation. I think it was a failure to provide dust mitigation was called out and that's certainly something that we have seen. Uh, or that our, our clients, uh, the Wilsons have seen in their experience. Karina, I think we have a video that we can show of some of the dust issues, representative of the dust issues that you see on the, on the site. So, uh, Karina will pull that up. I believe this was taken just a couple of weeks ago on September, September thirtieth. So you, you start to see, and this is hitting up, you know, the beginnings of a big truck coming, literally coming out of the cloud on the property. It's difficult to make it out entirely. Uh, and it disappears into the cloud again. I think in a little while we'll see another uh, uh, truck again. It, it's amazing how difficult it is to see these vehicles uh, through the cloud that is existing on the property. The two thousand seventeen approval requires that there be sprinkler systems on the property to mitigate this type of uh, pollution, to be honest. And it's not clear to me that those tools are in place. I think one of the commissioners mentioned earlier, you know. You have some conditions that you need to abide by that are in existence today. Why can't you just abide by those today? And I would say that's a, that's a pretty good question, and I would say, but I would suggest, I, I suppose, respectfully suggest. That before anything new is permitted by this commission, that you get assurances. That all the uh, conditions that you enacted back in two thousand seventeen are being abided by. There's no reason why neighbors should have to wait to uh, ensure that there's compliance with dust mitigation. With the area, the limits on the amount of material stored onsite, uh, with the promise that there would be no processing or crushing or screening on the site. Those are all things that they should be doing today, and you do not need to approve this application to make those things happen on the site. And you know, if this hearing is continued, I would request that you ask the applicant to show that they have begun to take, take steps. Towards affirmative compliance with those existing conditions. Let's see, um, another area where we think, uh, again, uh, there was a number, I think it's the number of cars permitted on the site. A maximum of forty-five that was cited in the violation, I believe. Uh, some of the photos we provided already show more than forty-five vehicles, again, something that can be complied with today. And we suggest letting the applicant show you proof of, uh, proof of concept here, that this is a condition that they can live with. So that we have a better sense of what they will do in the future. Um, I mentioned the crusher earlier. Uh, Karina, why don't we pull up the video of the processing machine that we have from, I think it's September twenty-ninth of this year? While this application was pending, remember back in two thousand seventeen. The applicant made an affirmative statement, not just to my clients, but to all of you on the commission, that there would not be any processing on the site. And that's not the case. And in, in multiple application materials, there is a, uh, almost an admission that there is processing and screening and sifting on the site. And that's not permitted. That activity should cease before any more approvals are, are, are given. You don't have to wait for that to happen. That's something that we were all promised almost a decade ago. Press, plus, press play, Karina. You can see uh, a, a dump truck here. Uh, dumping material into a processing machine, um, and right in the middle of the site. That's something that we were told would not happen in two thousand seventeen, and there it is happening while this application is pending, while they're asking your permission. For more. I think that's important to keep in mind. Hours of operation, that's something that I think we're all very sensitive to for obvious reasons. Um, certainly, uh, the, the reg change that the applicant suggested back in two thousand seventeen and got approval. And the special permit that they got approved, uh, recognized that there would be compliance, strict compliance with hours of operation, notwithstanding emergency incidences. And just in this month alone, uh, and, and the Wilsons will speak to this as others may as well. Thursday, October second at ten thirty PM. And Karina, you can pull up, that's one that we have a video of. It's hard to, you know, you can't get a video of someone slamming a tailgate or backing up all the time. Because you might not have your phone right there with you, but one of these we do have a video of. Thursday, October second at ten thirty PM. The next day, Friday, October third at ten PM. Wednesday, October, uh, uh, I believe it's October, uh, fifteenth at four thirty AM Friday. Uh, the seventh at seven forty-three PM and Monday, the tenth at four ten AM, five forty AM through five fifty-five AM. I mean, this is not, and, and I don't know if we'll hear it on the screen here, but if you hear what we provided to staff via email. And we have a thumb drive we'll give you, so you have that too. It's that sound like the Amazon truck that someone mentioned earlier, that, that quacking noise, and that's not something that you wanna hear. Certainly at ten thirty at night or, or four in the morning. Um. You know, there was a, a noise report that was provided by not just the applicant, but by AKRF as well. I would emphasize the portion of their report that said, you know, these rules are only in terms of, you know, tailgate slamming, backup. Uh, you know, uh, uh, not having the backup uh, beeps on the trucks. They're only effective if they're enforced, and they have not, as you all, as many of you have observed. They have, those rules have not been enforced to date, and I think that's important to keep in mind when you consider whether they will be enforced in the future. Um, you know, certainly a number of folks ask, well, what if you add a couple more rows, you know, of concrete uh, blocks? What if, and what if you, you know, cantilever, uh, uh, the, the wood fence? And maybe those steps individually don't have a huge impact, but perhaps all of those taken together will have some meaningful impact. And I would say if I'm getting woken up every night at two in the morning, I'll, you know, I, I want to make sure that everything is being done. To, to prevent that, to the extent, to the extent possible. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, important to understand. Uh, that in the original AKRF memo, there was, there was some question about whether that wooden component on the top of the concrete blocks was a weak link. And I think it's important that we make sure that AKRF is a hundred percent comfortable with the, with the system that's being deployed. Uh, and certainly, uh, uh, worth taking the time to get right, rather than rushing into, to only have to come back in a couple of weeks or a couple of months, or whatever the case may be. or a couple of months or whatever the case may be, if there's, if there's a, a failure. This is a special permit application, so it's more than just the noise ordinance, which is now codified for this use in the zoning regulations. So it, it does apply by way of the codification in the zoning regs that the applicant proposed over ten, uh, uh, almost ten years ago. Uh, the backup, uh, the limits on the backups do comply or are required. And that's something that the applicant said that they would do at multiple occasions several years ago. Uh, but it's important to look at the special permit criteria as well for this use. You're looking at health and safety. You're ensuring that the use doesn't adversely impact neighboring uses. And I would say certainly being woken up at night, having a cloud of dust in your backyard, having a processing machine that isn't supposed to be there. Certainly not positive things when you look at that factor, uh, avoiding adverse impact from noise order and fumes. Um, and avoiding adverse impacts on the neighboring properties, uh, in general. What, what concerns me is that we've seen it demonstrated an ability to comply with the conditions that are in existence today, even while a new application is pending. That makes me nervous about, you know, whether conditions that are put on this approval, how, how successful, you know, we, we will see compliance with those. I think that's something that should really be at the top of everyone's mind. However, to be safe, we have suggested number of conditions for your consideration in the event this application is approved. Think it's important because of the history of this site, because of the sensitivity of the neighboring uses, that the applicant come back and report regularly demonstrating compliance with the, with the, uh, with, with the approval. Uh, you know, we suggested quarterly, you know, I don't know what the right number is. That's something that we should maybe perhaps talk about, but showing to you, hey, uh, 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 we are complying all these great things. We told you we're gonna do in terms of the backups, uh, backup, uh, uh, emitters and, uh, slamming of the tailgate. We are, we are complying with that. You know, there was someone that was on the site at four thirty in the morning, but guess what? There was an emergency and here's proof, uh, here's proof from a third party that that was in fact in an emergency and not just someone dumping material because they were, you know, tied up earlier in the day. I think another important tool to consider, and this was something that perhaps was alluded to, uh, earlier was, you know, is there anyone on site who can, you know, if Jay's slamming his, his, his truck shut, who's gonna tell Jay to, to, to cut it out? Well, on, in other approvals for industrial uses, you all have required the operator to appoint a community liaison or outreach coordinator that, uh, their contact information is on file with the P and Z department. Neighbors have the contact information. So that if something is going on at four in the morning, there's someone who can get out, you know, there, there's someone who can get on it and, and address the issue immediately and, and hopefully avoid any further issues, uh, in the past. Also think it's important that if there is a noise barrier approved, that there be an independent, uh, uh, analysis of the success of that noise barrier so that we're not in this situation, uh, in the future. Others I think that are important worth measure, uh, mentioning, again, emphasizing hours of operation, uh, stating, uh, stating, uh, uh, clearly that no processing of earth material is permitted on site, holding the applicant to their original promise when you all approved, when, when this use was first allowed. That was certainly of importance then, and it's notable that, that, you know, it's, it's occurring now. Uh, and certainly limits on requiring reverse alarms to be equipped with white noise. Again, that's something that's been, uh, used on other contractors, you're a condition that has been used successfully in other contractors' yards in the city of Norwalk. Another point, and I'm trying to be, I promise I will not speak again as well, so, and I am wrapping up here. I believe in their materials, the applicant requested a waiver from an environmental analysis. I do, I respectfully disagree with that waiver request. I do not see how this use, this expansion, this intensity can be approved at this site without, uh, uh, an analysis of the environmental conditions, especially when you consider that these violations have been occurring for a number of years. Looking at the photos, the aerial photos that we provided back in August, I think if this was approved in 2017. So I think in 2020, 2021, I saw aerial images where I didn't see that water quality basin. So I don't know, you know, there's a discussion of that's being replaced. I don't know if that is, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't know that it's there today and I don't know when it left. So we should understand what's been going on on the site to make sure that you all have all the information you need to make a, a, a clear eyed decision on this application. Similarly, uh, I know you've received several petitions, uh, uh, from neighbors under, uh, section twenty two eighty nineteen of the Connecticut general statutes. I was not involved in the drafting of those petitions, but I think it's important to understand those as well. The statute there clearly states that petitioner should be allowed intervener status where there is, uh, environmental concerns that are raised within your jurisdiction. Clearly that's been raised, uh, clearly that's occurred here by way of the noise, the dust, uh, uh, the environmental analysis required by your regulations. And that if there is an environmental concern, uh, that you cannot approve the application unless there's, if, if there's a feasible prudent alternative, you should approve the feasible prudent alternative to, to what's been proposed. And I would submit that perhaps a good alternative would be to let the applicant prove to everyone that they can, they can meet the conditions they said they would meet back in 2017. Let's see proof of that for a period of time before we double the amount of material stored on site, before we allow processing on the site, which is not allowed today. You know, I, I think it's important that we get this right so that this doesn't happen, uh, in the future. Looking at Karina, I think we've covered everything that we want to. So, um, thanks so much for your time, folks. Really appreciate it.
Being members of the commission, um, my name is Alan Schibert, I live at one sixty six Poconoc Trail in Canaan. We are, uh, you have City of Norwalk taxpayers as well. Our property is abutted to the applicant's property. Uh, so I know we've been talking a lot about the noise and the environmental issues. One of the things that Jade touched on is the waiver for the, uh, environmental assessment. I think this is absurd to even consider it, considering all the, the trees that were cut down in the wetlands, all the machinery. And to the best of my knowledge, that Walter filtration system that was supposed to be installed in 2017 was never installed. So our well water is abutted to his property. So is the Wilsons, so is our neighbors still left. So for all we know, we, we are seriously it considering issues with what's going on with the water and what's going on with the, the wildlife and everything else, the pollution, the, the material, the dust pollution, noise vibrations, everything that's to the point that we went ahead and we contacted deep as well to have them, uh, put in their resources in that to try to see if anything has been affected. Now, noise has also been a, a great issue. My wife works from home a few days a week and during the day it's, you can't even work with the windows open. And I know they're claiming it's a fifty five decibel. I would love to have that meter on our window and, and as a matter of fact, I will and provide you guys with measurements. Now, this is during the day and at night it's significantly amplified, especially now that the foliage is starting to go and the trees that were taken down the last year, uh, the end of, uh, I believe it was August, of last year was when the violations were. Now, one thing that I find, uh, observe and, and frustrating is that it, it's been ongoing violation and expanding of his footprint and of his, uh, what you has allowed him for permitting since 2017. He was caught in twenty twenty four. We are twenty twenty five and he still operates exactly as he did before. There is no intervention whatsoever that's happened, nothing that's slowed down, no less noise, no less light, no trucks, not slamming. Everything's, I'm not sure, I mean, none of their suggesting that somebody's at the yard protecting it, maybe the guy's not there or maybe not because we hear this as early as last night, we hear him at three or four o'clock in the morning, the truck slamming, the backup, the lights that you could see from our bedroom window. So I urge you guys to really look into it and consider what if you were the neighbors, how would you feel? Or if he was the neighbor and his property, how would you feel? My belief is that the property is not designed for that area. I, I appreciate what he does for the, for the community and for what he does, but I don't think it was zoned properly. It's, it's a loud, it, it, an industry that's in a residential area. I think, uh, he, he was probably best served to have been somewhere else. Now, unfortunately, we're here now and we have to try to correct it and try to find a, 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 a middle point where everybody is on page. I will, uh, now invite my wife to speak her side of it and it'll give you another perspective. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
Hello, I'm Alicia Schibert. I'm at one sixty six Poconoc, New Canaan, but the backyard is mostly in, uh, Norwalk. Um, I just want to add a little bit, um, the acoustic testing was done in twenty twenty three. That was before the trees were cut down from the wet, uh, wetland area. I also find it very, you know, uh, well, I wanted to thank you first of all for listening to this. I think it's been a long time and it's been a little bit painful for me. I know same, we all have, you know, other things to do than just log into the public hearings all the time. But, um, uh, I, I, I don't have bad intentions for Mr. Penna at all. Um, I appreciate he, you know, he's doing great business, six hundred, uh, emergencies a year. That's a lot. But my point is maybe this is not the right place for him to be at. As he can go to sleep at night and sleep well, that he helped so many people. We are all suffering, we don't sleep, we are disrupted. Um, you know, it could be during the day, it could be at night, it could be a weekend, we never know. We have people staying with us, leaving the next day because the kid was waking up. It's just very unpleasant. So, uh, let's say the acoustic wall, let's say if it helps, we are also concerned about the environmental. Um, we see the dust, the cars are dirty, the deck is dirty. I don't know what we are inhaling. I don't know if our well water is affected and is it my responsibility to do all the testing? Or is it City of Norwalk responsibility to kind of protect the neighbors and, um, you know, the residents of Norwalk, of New Canaan, um, to kind of, you know, stand up for us and, um, evaluate whether this is really the right place for Mr. Penna. And, you know, maybe, yeah, I don't know. I'm not an expert whether the acoustic wall is gonna help. I don't know what's going on at the site. I just hear the noises, I just see the dust. But I don't know if I'm affected, is my health affected? I don't know that. So I would appreciate if you could do some studies or, you know, kind of let us know that there is nothing that we should be concerned about. I would appreciate that. So thank you so much again for your time and for standing up for us and for listening to everything.
Hello, I'm Peter Wilson, um, uh, represented by counsel a little bit earlier. I'm seventy Poconoc Trail. And, um, forgive me if I'm a little ornery this evening. Last night we were awakened five times by activity at the Penna site at two eighty four New Canaan Avenue. Eleven forty three PM and I sent an email directly to council as soon as I heard it. Above oh five AM I was awakened, two ten AM, four seventeen AM and five twenty AM. By six thirty this morning, activity was bustling again. It was a sleepless night and one of the roughest nights in recent memory. And the damage to our lives and our property is very, very real. We don't come here for fun. We don't come here to throw Mr. Penna and his business under the bus because I agree with everybody as I did in two thousand sixteen. His services are essential, but he is simply misplaced in our neighborhood. And not just my backyard, but a host of people within easy measuring and listening distance. Our neighborhood is two acre zoning, over an acre of our property is in Norwalk. It abuts the construction yard. While our address is New Canaan, we pay to roll up taxes. We've lived in the neighborhood for nineteen years and every day seen the transition from the quiet armory property to Penna Construction. Here's a look, which has been previously submitted at the before and after. Wired Armory, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, pictures taken from the internet. And this is just a few days ago taken another aerial shot. You guys have seen many versions of this, you've been to the site, but I feel like a picture is kind of worth the thousand words in terms of all that's gone on since the quiet days of the Armory to today. So I'll leave that behind for what it's worth. In two thousand sixteen, we testified against a construction company being allowed to change the zoning and be permitted to operate on a otherwise quiet armored property. While we appreciate Penna's predicament of losing the Goldstein property, the nature of his industrial work is not suited for residential neighborhood. We felt Penna needed to look harder for another location that time. Despite resistance from our family, the neighbors around the property and a no vote from two planning and zoning commissioners, Penna Construction was provided a zoning variance and special permit to operate under very specific requirements. At the time, Mr. Penna committed to the Planning and Zoning Commission that he was a small time operator, just trying to survive. He made promises to this commission, your predecessors and to some who are still on it, to the neighbors and to the local news media that he would be quiet. He would park loud vehicles inside, he'd be off the lot by seven fifteen in the morning and back parked by four thirty each day. Not participate in loud activities like processing and screening materials on site and other similar commitments. More promises and more promises. We were clearly all misled. For nearly eight years, construct, Penna Construction has been a growing problem, failed to implement the very basic requirements of the special permit and spoiled our neighborhood day and night. You have been provided with reams of material, reams of material about how he has spoiled the neighborhood, outlining violations, damages and written testimony for many people. I will not attempt to repeat all of those points. Perhaps not submitted to you is that in those same eight years, my wife and I and some of our neighbors have spoken with Mr. Penna and his leadership team. We've met with them to discuss solutions, offered some financial assistance to solve some of the noise, dust and light problems. Meetings were friendly, but consistently resulted in delays, a lack of response. Things just got worse as his business grew and he moved deeper and deeper into violating his special permit. At one meeting, Mr. Penner, Penna acknowledged that he had consolidated a second yard in another location into the Norwalk property. That was part of his growth problem. A year ago, because we were getting nowhere at all on our own and Penna's wetlands clear cutting was eventually recognized by the city of Norwalk. We felt we needed professional help. We hired Carmody Law to help us appeal and find a reasonable solution. This is my first time and my wife's first time in our sixty years living on this earth that we've hired a lawyer to fight for us. It's sad, it's painful to have to spend thousands of dollars to get the city of Norwalk to enforce its special permit and to defend our neighborhood from further damage. It's a very emotional, very difficult item for us. Repeated wakes up, wakes, wake up calls and then wakes, being woken up in the middle of the night. It's borderline tears at times with what we feel like we're having to endure and I'm not embellishing. You go to sleep and you don't know when the next bang is gonna come, come. You wake up to a bang, you try to fall back asleep and you wonder when, when the next slam is gonna come because you simply can't sleep through those. Please do not fall for the Penna story, I'm sorry, a year ago. Uh, please do not fall for the Penna storyline and list of promises that make it all seem like growth will fit within the neighborhood. He's well represented by firms that are familiar to this commission and to us. From our perspective, these firms are doing some good work, but they really work for him and are spinning the staying stories and making the same promises Penna Construction made eight years ago and began breaking on day one. Trust was lost over the years, even more so this last year since the notice of violations were issued and Penna made very little effort to comply with the commission's special permit. If you look at these pictures, with the exception of the replanting that was done in the wetlands area that he cut, he's violating every single aspect of the permit you were issued from a visual standpoint. Overflowing materials, uh, number of vehicles on the lot, the list goes on, and you all have cited them in his violations. So I'll leave these behind as well, there's zoom ins of the other shots that just demonstrate the magnitude of the issues. My final appeal is simple and reminiscent of my testimony eight years ago. We are not looking to oust Penna from the property, but we ask that his operation be brought back into compliance with the special permit and the damage inflicted be remediated. We also want improved noise, dust and light barriers built so Penna's original good neighborhood promises can be, that he made to everybody in two thousand sixteen can be made true. They simply have not. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
You do have a couple of people virtually.
Anybody is online would like to speak?
There are two, anybody else in the room that wishes to speak? Before we shift over to the. Before we shift over to the online. Brian, you can bring them over, I guess.
Sure. Uh, first is Sula Frito Velasquez.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you so much all for your time. I've been living at eight twenty-four Carter Street since, um, very early two thousand seventeen. Uh, live here with my husband and two children. Penna has repeatedly shown that they have not abided by the special permit. Personally, I felt deeply bothered and offended that the clear cutting of the wetlands occurred on the Friday of Labor Day weekend. In my assumption perhaps, to avoid being stopped, to avoid being found, it was a half day. By the time I could report them to the Norwalk Wetlands and get someone on the phone, I was told, I'm sorry, we're closing in thirty minutes. They were not available to help us until Tuesday. By that point, the work was done. I have an eight and six year old child, eight and six year old children. Last night alone, there was slamming four times at midnight. In addition to some of the other times mentioned, there was also October ninth, twelve fifty-six A M. There was work being done literally as I'm sitting here attending this meeting virtually. I could hear and see the trucks in the Penna Construction. I had a perfectly enclosed yard. I'm now looking at a construction site. I work from home. I see the construction site. My bedroom, my office face the construction site. I, um, I also want to note that I have a neighbor who's unable to attend as she's putting down her one year old child. Um, I fear if I'm allowed to read her statement with your permission, um, this is Sarah Winn. She lives at eight thirty Carter Street. She wrote, living here less than two years, everything has been great with one exception, Penna. Their loud construction noises and continuous truck movement would make me reconsider buying and moving where we did. When we first moved in, luckily, we were focused on our newborn. But shortly after, Penna with no warning or communication cleared an obscene amount of trees behind our property. Once they did, the continuous noises um, overnight became more and more noticeable with one loud noise after another. Seeing how close our property is to their site, we hear every single noise, including our one year old child who continuously wakes up from this disruption. With another baby on the way, we fear how much worse it will get as they do not respect the neighborhood or those who live on this site. Um, she also met, um, she also noted that the child was woken up. Let me just double check my notes here. Um, he was woken up at five thirty this morning. Okay, this is a one year old child and she's pregnant with her second. Um, again, I just, I thank you all for your time. Um, and I just, I just want to say in closing, you know, please ask yourselves, would you want Penna Construction as your neighbor, given everything that you've heard? Um, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next we have Marwan Saidi.
Good evening. My name is Marwan Saidi. And my wife and I, my wife is Elena Zaika, and we live at forty-six Carter Street, which is one of the properties I think that's been talked about that's uh, very close to the Penna property. Um, if I had known that this hearing was gonna be both in person and on Zoom, I would have also been in attendance. Um, but I do thank you all for your time and your attention to this matter. I mean, we've been doing this for a while between uh, between Wetlands Commission and Planning and Zoning, there's been a lot of hearings and so I really appreciate the time. I'd also like to thank the Wilsons and Shabares because they kind of organized the neighbors. They went door to door to, you know, bring us into the fold and I really appreciate them doing that. Finally, I'd like to thank Commissioner Schulman, who I believe voted no on the original uh, application back in two thousand seventeen, and I would hope that he would do so again and maybe some others would join him this time. In a January two thousand seventeen article in The Hour, the Penna stated that they wanted to be good neighbors to the residents surrounding their new facility on New Canaan Avenue. Well, State Farm, they are not. In fact, the article was the source, I believe, of the quote that Penna's counsel used in his presentation earlier this evening. Also in that article was a quote from Mrs. Penna that vehicles on the property would be stored and started inside the facility garage to keep them out of, you know, to keep noise down for the, for all of us neighbors. The promises made both to the commission and in the article unfortunately did not come to pass. I noticed that counsel for Penna also left out of his presentation the list of restrictions and conditions for Penna's use of this space, which were brought up by the Wilson's attorney. Uh, most of these have since been completely ignored to the detriment of those neighbors. The scope and examples of their violation have been well covered in both these hearings and those held by the Conservation Committee Commission, so I'm not gonna go into those. Although while I was looking into this, I did look at the noise ordinances for Norwalk. And in section sixty-eight six, uh, under prohibited actions, it says, construction. No person shall at any time operate construction equipment on the construction or demolition site or carry on any construction or demolition during nighttime hours except in an emergency in the interest of public safety and then only with a permit from the Director of Health or his or her designee. So I wonder if Penna every night has such an emergency permit from the Director of Health to be doing this. Um, nearly a year ago, Penna was finally cited for some of their transgressions, but instead of sip, instead of fixing the issues, they have taken the opportunity to try to expand their operation. And while never to my knowledge paying a cent of the, the, the hundred and fifty dollar a day fine that they're supposed to be levied when they're not in compliance. We started tracking in December of two thousand twenty-four in a Google spreadsheet that uh, all of our neighbors have access to every time there was an issue. In less than a year, that I, that spreadsheet has eighty-seven issues listed in it. Now, that's not always going to be, um, that's not always, that's not every issue. That's the issues we remember to put into the spreadsheet, which, you know, sometimes when you get woken up three or four times a night, you might not remember to do that the next day. Um, Penna now claims that the sound barrier that they're gonna put in will bring them in line with noise level limits. Why were they allowed to operate outside of those limits for seven years? And now, just now they're gonna be brought into line and only if their application is approved? I'm sorry, but claiming that there is no police citations is not proof that you have not violated the ordinances. It just means that no one ever called the cops because of banging noises. And even if we were to bring Norwalk P D away from more serious matters to do that, they wouldn't get here in time. The trucks would be gone. These aren't things that go on for hours and hours and hours. They happen and then they stop and then they happen and then they stop. And you, as Mr. Wilson said, we don't know when the next bang is coming. Um, you know, unless they came here at six thirty every morning because that's when the site really starts rolling up. That's when you get backup alarms and they sound just like every backup alarm I've ever heard before. And I hear the quacking ones, but you still hear plenty of the regular beeping ones as well. I hear banging tailgates. We hear heavy trucks idling. I mean, it shakes the walls of our house. Um, you know, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um, you know, you, the applicant asked us to trust them, but they've already stated that there'll be no supervisory personnel on site at night, which is when the majority of our issues are happening. By the way, the meeting, meeting the absolute minimum requirements and continually referring to how you're exempt from ordinances is a pretty lousy attempt at being a good neighbor. Leaving the backup alarms and tailgate slamming out of the discussion of, you know, of the data makes no sense because you know that that can't be attenuated by this wall. Um, you know, there are houses far closer than three hundred and fifty feet. Mine is one of them. And the gentleman from the uh, the peer review, I believe, mentioned that, as did, I think it was Anna. Um, or maybe Tammy. Um, our house is very close, depending on where they're doing the work. So I'm worried that even with the wall, it's not gonna block any noise from our property, my property and that of my neighbor, Dr. Robert Kallodny. We, we're basically straight across from the building and, and I actually worry that the sound wall is going to funnel sound more into our homes. Um, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that. The beeping still happens every day and I hope that the members of the commission can appreciate what it feels like to be shaken out of sleep by the banging of the tailgates or to experience the walls literally shaking as their heavy equipment comes and goes down the driveway that runs the length of our backyard. Now, in the original permit, Penna was allowed to have thirty vehicles on the property with a built-in expansion to forty-five vehicles to support a growing business. My neighbor has walked their property during the day and counted sixty or more vehicles on multiple occasions. They're already in violation and want to create more paved areas to put more vehicles. When does it stop? When we wanted to convert a finished space above our garage into an in-law suite, we had to get permits and a variance from this commission. The space has no effect on our neighbors and is literally invisible to the outside. We abide by the conditions given, including submitted an annual affidavit of compliance. We are actually being the good neighbors and following the rules while Penna is not. And they are not doing so in ways that directly affect everyone in the neighborhood and the environment. I realize this is Penna's livelihood, but we are talking about our lives. We bought this house in May of two thousand eighteen. It was and is our dream home. We plan for it to be the home that we would live in until retirement, where our not even, not yet born grandchildren could play in the yard. This was supposed to be our last home. Now my wife talks almost daily about selling the home and it's because of our good neighbors. For many of us, our homes represent our single greatest asset, both emotionally and financially. Penna's operation significantly affects our quality of life and our financial stability. Additionally, they have already shown that despite their promises, they have no intention of being good neighbors. After their broken promises, we cannot take them at their word. I appreciate your time and thank you for letting me speak.
Next, we have Peter Hontez.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Peter Hontez. I reside at eight twenty-four Carter Street in New Canaan. Uh, I live here with my wife and two kids. Uh, I am a trade architect and I have worked in the design and construction industry for the better part of twenty years. This site operates like a construction site. There are clear rules and regulations that dictate construction sites, much like the special permit has dictated to the applicants and that has gone, gone time and time again, unheard. So as much as we want to talk about adding barriers, as much as we want to talk about removing buttons, it comes down to the clear, manageable and executable requirements of the special app permit that are not being abided by. And it's unfortunate. It is absolutely unfortunate. It's about being good neighbors. It's about being good stewards. And none of that has occurred for the last seven years, ten years. So I'm not gonna reiterate everything that's been spoken by my neighbors and by council this evening. But I will add that there need to be clear and actionable violations and penalties that are appropriately levied for the continued misuse of this property. And those need to be conditions before anything is approved to further occur on this lot. I feel so, so hopelessly sorry for my neighbors. We all suffer and it's unfortunate. Thank you.
Next, we have Bill DiMarzo.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Bill DiMarzo, one Clem Lane in Norwalk and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna second what the last speaker just said. I'm, I'm really here to support my neighbors. Um, you, you hear the frustration in their voices. This is, this is a real experience they are going, going through. I, I do have specific points that I want to speak to. I, I didn't go probably last or very close last kind of on purpose, but I'm, I'm sort of getting emotional here, hearing to them speak. Um, so you know, these are not NIMBYs that, you know, are complaining after they moved into a property that, hey, there's something going on that's, you know, been there a hundred years, you know, and, and, and they don't like it. This is, this is a real impact on their, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing on their physical health, their, their mental health, affecting their livelihoods, just their lives. But now, now I'll get to at least a few points that I would like to uh, speak, speak to. Um, and, and if I haven't thanked you for your time yet, I will do that now. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'm, I'm concerned about the eastern border of the property, either in its current state or in the pro, pro, proposed state, but arguably in the proposed state, I think there is a greater uh, can, 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 concern, um, that that Penna is operating basically a staging area in that eastern side of the yard and, and more so in that southeast corner. And, and if the permit was to be, if, if, if this permit, um, app, application was to be approved, um, per their site plan, there are twenty-six parking lots, I'm, I'm sorry, parking spaces, pardon me, um, on the, I guess what would be the southern edge of the property. Many of them over the underground stormwater re, 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 retention basins. Um, combined with the screener in that area and the, and the outdoor storage area to the left, that is gonna leave open a very large space, which is on that, well, which is per their proposal going to be used for, you know, vehicle parking. And I believe that one of the representatives, I can't remember, see if I made a note here, if it was um, the attorney, if it was Attorney Bernheim, or if it was Mr. Carey, that said it would be, it would be equipment parking. Um, that, that the sound barrier only goes, this on the eastern side, only as far as behind the cell towers. It does not, um, it's, it's extend on the entire eastern border, eastern side of the property. Um, I did, do believe I heard some, well, let me just keep on going and then maybe I'll get back to that point. Um, why I'm raising this is because I feel that homes on May Drive and on Fullmar Lane, I believe, um, are going to be exposed to increased noise, increased levels from, from the increased levels of, of, of activity in that portion of the yard. Um, there is one of Butter on May Drive. I don't know if he's here tonight. Um, I don't know if any of the other homeowners in that area have been informed of this meeting tonight. Um, so I guess, you know, I am speaking for them, um, but you know, again, um, it just seems like there are homes in Norwalk that are that are exposed to noises emanating from that yard. And I request that that this uh, commission, um, and basically to echo some of the sentiments already voiced, that, that that the applicant be, be required to comply with the conditions of the two thousand seventeen special permit before anything else can be a, a, approved with a condition that a sound barrier is now required. I, I certainly have my doubts, as some of the previous speakers do, as to the efficacy of a sound barrier. Um, but at least it's something. Um, we'll see if it works. Um, but that is, that is um, my real concern that a portion of homes in Norwalk are not being considered when it comes to the noise attenuation in the application. I appreciate your time again and thank you very, very much.
Uh, and if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen and click that once.
Anybody dialed into, I do see a phone number, star nine.
Nobody wants.
That's it. I said online.
Okay, so we'll close the public part. Testimony portion of the uh, public hearing and the uh, applicant will have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Penna would like to address the commission.
Good evening. Um, I wanna thank everybody for being here and except, you know, including the Wilsons. They're great people, but I'm here to tell a little story. Okay, I'm gonna tell a story that is my life. Okay. Nineteen fifty-six, I believe, fifty-six, fifty-seven, state took our property in Westport, six or seven acres to build I ninety-five. They said, go out of business to my dad. We survived. We rented. We, we did what we had to do. Fast forward fifty years. Fast forward 50 years or so, state in Connecticut says, we want your property on Liberty Square. Go out of business if you have to. We don't care. We gotta build a bridge. We said, what are we gonna do? Two years. Two years went by and we did. Whoever said, I should look harder, I looked harder for property. Martin Luther King, South Norwalk, any place within boundaries that I can run my business. I have a two-hour response time. This is my business. This is my livelihood. My dad started it. I took it. It was supposed to go third generation. My son, 26-year veteran of police department, drops dead at 50. Okay, I'm left to run the business at 80. I'm not trying to deceive the Wilsons or any of my neighbors. I wanted to build a wall on their property. I said, I'll build a hundred-foot-high berm on your property. Give me permission. I planted trees on the Wilsons' property. They may have forgotten, but I did when I moved in. You can call me a bad guy. You can call me what you want. I'm surviving. I work every night. We're working tonight and we're gonna work around the clock on a state road at Broad Street or near the first district. We're there all night with Metro North. They closed a railroad down. There's a water main break under it. We're in Stanford on Ha-Ha-High Ridge Road. Thirty-six-inch water main blew up last night. We're there around the clock. We're gonna be there all weekend. Yes, there's gonna be noise and there's gonna be noise. I instruct my men about the slamming of the tailgates. I suspended my grandson. I suspended my grandson, I have proof of it, for slamming the tailgate on a little truck, okay? He got two days off, okay? That's what I do. My men are my livelihood. I'm here. I'll build a wall. I'll build anything that they want. But I have to work. I have to continue with my business. You're the judge and jury. I know there's a gentleman amongst you that didn't vote. Well, that's his prerogative. Maybe someday he's gonna need me. I hope not, but maybe. All I can say is I said what I had to say because I feel that I've been, said some things that aren't true. I'm not a liar. I tried backup alarms, but if somebody doesn't have a backup alarm and they drive over your son, your daughter, your wife, your mother, your father, because there was no backup alarm, are we all gonna be here tonight saying, we don't like the quacking? I don't think so, because I've seen people get run over, get killed on a job site. So I know what it's all about and include Mr. Wilson. I'm glad he brought up his points, but I'm as human as him. I've worked all my life for this business and I'm not looking to get anything for nothing. I've paid my dues. And I don't know what, what they want, whatever they want. I'll try to provide to them and give me a timeline and give me this, give me that. I'm talking to you and I'd probably shoot myself in the foot. Really doesn't matter anymore. Like I say, I'm on the backside of my life. I'm 80. But going on with my grandsons and my future people that are gonna run this business, because I'm staying. I'm staying. I'm a fighter. I'm staying here. I'm gonna abide by the rules, but I'm staying. So let's try to do it together. And I hope that everybody here, my neighbors and anybody else that has complaints on, on Zoom or whatever it is, that I'll try. Come to me. Come in my office and sit down. I'm there. Well, I don't need the smirks and I don't like and I don't approve of what you call me. And I'm, no, what you don't like.
Hey, guys.
Yeah. I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair, not one bit fair. That kind of attitude is for kindergartners, okay? I try. I'll build him a berm. I'll build him a berm as high as his house on his property. He wanted the, the berm back there. He, he encouraged it. Yes, we cut trees out. We're a month before they, 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 uh, they, they, they moved the setback from 50 feet to 100. My advisors didn't know that and I didn't cut it to the woman who says I cut it on a holiday weekend. That's bogus. I had a tree guy lined up for weeks ahead. He couldn't get there. I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes or anything else. Please, I'm sorry. I'm emotional because as I was here before, this is my livelihood. This is my life and, and I thank you for the consideration. You guys knew what you wanted to do.
Not only is this Mr. Penn's livelihood, it's, 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 it's maybe 50 other employees. We're very much a, a family business and we support a lot of families at Penna. And one, one of our core values there is, is, is about families. And, and we take our employees very seriously and our staff. And the, the, the kind of slightness where we, we're, part of the reason why we're here and there's some, why the, some of the data is back from 23 and why we cut trees down. And it wasn't done on the cover of darkness. It was days of cutting trees. We've had discussion with the neighbors and, and, and we went to, uh, Wetlands for a pre, a pre-approval request to put a berm up. And they said, no, you can't. It's too close to the wetlands. We said, okay, fine. Let's try to help the neighbors and do something proactively. We're gonna work outside of the wetland, what we thought was outside the wetland setback. And we made a mistake. But we were doing that to be neighborly. And we do that, and we, we, we have a 12-acre site. We occupy less than two acres of it that we don't use. That we also, we're also taxpayers and our employees are taxpayers. And we support the local businesses here and we support the infrastructure. So, y-y-you know, we're, we're people here too. We're just trying to get along too. And we're trying to earn a living and we're trying to survive as well. And we're, we're an important resource to the community and to our fellow employees that count on us and their families count on us each and every day. And we take that extraordinarily serious as a business. Thank you.
You know, what, what I heard a lot from the neighbors was they want a solution to the noise. They want a solution to the dust. And although they don't believe it, that, that is why we're here tonight. We are proposing something that we feel is a solution to the original special permit approval, which was not the most well-thought-out plan. That plan is still in place. That special permit is still in place. But to go back to that one, there are no acoustical barriers. There's no approved wall. There's nothing on site to stop the noise. Um, it was not a well-thought-out plan. This one is. And I hear a lot of speculation, a lot of testimony from laypeople saying that the 21-foot wall is not gonna be, not gonna do anything. Um, but the experts, your expert and our expert, say otherwise. And as the commission, you have to give due consideration to the expert testimony. There's zero testimony that says that the 21-foot wall is not sufficient. We've agreed to extend the wall based upon your, um, uh, peer reviewers' recommendations um, towards, um, Carter, uh, towards Carter Street or, um, we have on our plans, all of the bins are covered. All of them are sprinklered. You can be sure, you know, especially now that, that I'm involved, that every condition that you impose on this hopeful approval will be thoroughly vetted with the Pennas and implemented. If this is approved, they have said that they can build this wall within 60 days. If you remember about a month ago, we said that we needed about a month or two to plant all of the trees, to restore the clear-cut area that was done by a mistake, by bad advice. And they did that before tonight's hearing. They were able to do that. They will build this wall and then we'll see how well, how well that actually resolves these noise issues. There will always be noise. It is an approved contractor's yard. It's not an abandoned armory. It's not open space. It, it, it's not a single-family residential housing development. It's a contractor's yard that was approved by your predecessors. And that's what we're stuck with right now. We're trying to make this better. And this plan does that. It helps with circulation. It does provide more area, active site area, further away from all of the neighbors, but that, that helps with circulation. That helps to alleviate a lot of the congestion that causes the noise. We did request an environmental waiver. Um, that's because it's an existing site. Um, it's already approved as a contractor's yard. We've gone through and then Wetlands, they've approved this. We've shown the sprinklers, uh, on our site plan that will help with the dust to implement the old conditions while we're trying to fix the problem. The old conditions on the old site, site plan, special permit are not going to fix the problem. It's gonna just prolong the problem. This wall, this acoustical barrier is gonna go a long way. It's gonna work better than the neighbors believe because two experts have said that. We're not proposing any more parking on sites. The same amount of parking as originally approved. I think there's a distinction between automobiles and construction uh, equipment. Construction equipment doesn't count towards one of the 45 vehicles on site. Vehicles are, um, uh, there, there will be not, there will be no more than 45 vehicles on site as per the original conditions. We're happy to file an annual affidavit to show compliance with everything, if that's what, uh, the commission would like us to do. And we're happy to discuss with you if you have suggested conditions now um, that would make you feel more comfortable. I would love to have a conversation about those and, um, and, and discuss those. But I think the plan in front of you is a very well-thought-out plan for a site, um, that is a public utility contractor's yard already and has a special permit already. And we're trying to make it better and more palatable for our neighbors.
Steve, um, I, I don't think anybody, um, has, uh, uh, indicated, uh, that the work that Mr. Penn does, uh, is important and, uh, his need for, um, a facility is important. Um, and this is where his facility is, uh, located. There is a lot of mistrust. Why can't we, um, ask, uh, Mr. Penn to meet the requirements in the original approval? Uh, it seems to me that, uh, uh, the barrier, uh, would, uh, go a long way toward, uh, doing that. The idea of, uh, having both a combination of some staff and, uh, cameras, um, to make sure that, um, uh, we don't have those, uh, slamming noises uh, to deal, uh, with, uh, the backup signals, um, in a way that, um, is acceptable both to the neighbors and, and, uh, frankly, to the government, uh, state, state and local government. Makes sense to me. Uh, but it doesn't mean that we have to approve everything they're asking. We can initially just require them to meet the requirements, uh, of the approvals of 2017 um, and have them come back to us after they've, uh, uh, shown us, uh, that, uh, they're willing, um, uh, to try and make that work, maybe after six months. And we can reconsider the rest of, uh, what they're asking.
So there'd be a couple facets to that. One, and then I probably, uh, kick it back to Attorney Bernheim on that. But the proposal to reconfigure a portion of the yard, moving the bins to the, to the, I'm gonna call it to the north, I guess, northwesterly direction. That's a sound mitigation measure. So if you don't authorize that portion of it, I don't know if, I mean, th-there could be certain things in terms of how they operate on the site in terms of, you know, retrofitting the rest of the vehicles to have the different noise dampering, to better monitor the, uh, slamming of the gates, those kind of things. But that doesn't mitigate all the noise. So if the, if, if you're of the mindset that the, uh, expert testimony was sufficient enough that the, uh, adding the bin walls and the heights, extending them out vertically, plus the eight-foot panels on top of that will mitigate a lot of the noise issues, then that would be a modification of approval, which you would have to approve. But then you could then say, we are not going to allow other expansion activities until we've had a period of time to digest the, the changes and see how those have worked.
And, and I must say, I agree with, with Attorney Bernheim that we've had expert, uh, testimony from two specialists, one hired by the applicant, the other working for us. Um, and, um, I, I think it's, uh, more than reasonable for us to assume uh, that those experts know their business and that, uh, uh, we're gonna get, uh, the results, um, that they're saying that we will.
Can I pose a question to the applicant, maybe the civil engineer of, um, is it possible to construct the wall for uh, sound mitigation without necessarily including the bins? I understand that the material in the bins adds to the sound dampening, but to your earlier point, I wonder, as I see the bins as a form of expansion, um, if that's something we can maybe reconsider in six months or so. Um, in that way, some of the sound attenuation is addressed as well as a part.
I'll, I'll let them. I, 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 I'm just, based on my conversations with, with our folks and they can jump in as well. As I think if the, if the activity with the bins is happening on the other end, that sound is reflecting back towards the neighbors. I think, which is why putting the bins, flipping them helps with the sound, but I'll let the experts confirm.
I think you're right, Steve. The, 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 um, the closer the sound occurs to that wall, the greater effect that wall has on the sound, because it absorbs it. If you put that wall up and then all of the activities on the other side of the site, there's a chance that it will go over the wall and it will actually be noisier and it's not a true fix. Again, the, the plan that we're proposing, um, is a better storm drainage system. That's better for the environment. It move, it allows better circulation on the site so that there's less, you know, running into one another and having to back up because there's two trucks head to head. It opens up the site. And then again, the Conex bins that were required, uh, or proposed initially and part of the original approval. If the, the, the major concern here is sound, that's the major concern that everybody has brought up. Think about sliding heavy metal pipes into heavy metal bins with heavy machinery and trying to pull them in and out. It, it's just going to add even more noise that now what we have to try to absorb with the barrier. Whereas if we're just allowed to keep it outdoors, properly screened, so that it's not visible, there's less noise. There's less metal on metal. The, the thing that everybody's talking the most about is metal on metal, a, a, a tailgate slamming, metal on metal. One of your original approvals required us to have metal on metal for, it's almost metal on metal on metal, right? Like there's sometimes metal pipes or, or sometimes plastic pipes or whatever they are, concrete pipes, going into metal with heavy metal machinery. Like that's causing more noise. This plan as proposed is a very well-thought-out plan. That's why it took us so long to get here in front of you. From the original, uh, notice of violation. We didn't want to have to come back again after we got an approval and say, we got it wrong again. We wanted to put the very best plan possible, the most thoughtful plan possible. Because we don't, we don't want the neighbors to be disturbed, but we also don't want the neighbors disturbing us, to be honest, right? Like we want to be able to, we want to be good neighbors. We never want to have to talk to them again because they're satisfied. And I'm sure they feel the same way. We will. We can set somebody. We can do what Jay Klein suggested, a, a, a phone number for them to call if there's an issue. We will, we can set somebody, we can do what Jay Klein suggested, a, a, a phone number for them to call if there's an issue. We can set that up. We can, we can do these reasonable uh conditions. But um, our goal is to dampen this noise as much as possible with this acoustical barrier. And have a quieter site because it's more well thought out and more, more well designed.
Can I, I just wanna, I, I think it's important for the commission and the public to understand the. The actual request as part of this application, so that. I'm just going back through the staff memo on this, so the, the, the first piece um. Was expansion of the yard to the east, that was. Towards the wetland area, that was the um. Portion that uh Attorney Bernheim indicated this under litigation with the Conservation Commission that they denied that. Expansion to the east, that was a staff recommendation to, to back up uh the decision of the Conservation Commission. The second piece related to that was the relocation of the uh underground uh stormwater detention system from the. Kind of uh LED, uh LED approach more towards the traditional undergrounding of uh detention. This next piece would be uh related to the.
Could we pull up the memo? Steve, sorry to cut you off.
Oh, uh, yes. Hold on, I'm working off uh two screens, so give me a sec.
Perfect.
So this is, this was Amelia's staff memo that I think went out with your uh latest packet. And, and then just kind of recapping was uh the expansion. And the relocation and reconfiguration of the stormwater detention system, expanding that to the east. And uh she's kind of shown that uh in, in the. Yellow markup area, the top being what was the initial approval, whereas the bottom is, is what uh the applicant is requesting.
Can we um? Approve the rest without approving that uh expansion?
Yeah, you certainly can, um. That, that's uh well within your prerogative to do so. Uh, and there was also uh talk of uh. The pavement and having the area paved. I think the intent of having that area paved is to make sure. Whatever drips or runoff any of those vehicles, because they're construction equipment, they. Take a lot of abuse and stuff drips, oil drips, is to make sure all that is captured within the. Detention system is treated before any of it's released out, so I think that's. One of the reasons why they wanted that uh. Paving done and the curving done is really to c- contain and collect that water and, and get it to go in in the proper area.
Is there any, Steve, is there any uh? Requirement that they test the drinking water to be sure that the wells of the neighbors are?
Yeah, it was not, I don't know that's necessarily in the purview of. The, I don't think it's in the purview of the Conservation Commission, that typically that is regulated at a state level, if at all, uh depends on the type of site. You're using, um, I'm assuming, and I don't know this, perhaps Attorney Bernheim knows, when, when the property was transferred from the state to the Pennas. Did they do an environmental assessment at that time to determine whether there were any issues on the site? I don't, don't know if that occurred.
Well, I don't mean if there were i- i- issues on the site then, it, but there is this activity. Contributing to any.
Yeah, th- there's not, as far as I know, there's not a trigger requiring them to do that now. I don't know if it's. In our purview to say you have to go out and do a phase one site assessment or a groundwater. You know, install a groundwater wells, I don't like that.
We have any control over whether they have to do an environmental assessment?
The, the regulations do um have the provision where you can require environmental report. They're really, you know, it's kind of an, I'd say, not great standard because there's not specific. I, uh, specific items that are required to be addressed in that report. Typically, the things you look at are the noise, the dust, the runoff. And whether you get into specifics of like groundwater issues, I think, you know, that's. Pushing the bounds of this body's authority as far as I'm concerned, but that's something I'd probably have to check with Corporation Council on.
Which also something we could just ask. Uh, the applicant uh if they'd be willing to do it as part of an approval.
Yeah, I, I would say too, we're, we're, you know, we're yard, you know, unfortunately, this is, this has gone on quite a long time, as the neighbors will know and have spoken about. I think uh to try to get that done and then have the hearing re- remain open and then. Open it back up for comment on that might not be the best avenue, maybe that would be like if you. If you went down the path of approving a portion of this in terms of like. Getting the acoustic wall done to maybe help address that, that issue. And then if they did want to come back with any modifications in the future, that then, that environmental report may be done as part of that, and then at that time. The other items that are required, such as the paving and the curving and the revised stormwater management, making sure all those. Water quality measures are done and that can be addressed at, at that time. And I, I don't know if the, you know, the applicant on their own is doing any additional testing or monitoring or anything, I'm not sure if it was ever addressed or discussed.
Um, can I, can I say a couple things? Are you still working through?
No, no, go ahead.
Um, so obviously we went through inland wetlands and got approval there, so they're very focused on. Water quality and uh runoff and so on and so forth, and we received their approval. Um, they did impose a twenty-five foot buffer um, uh adjacent to where our. Um, underground water detention system is proposed. Um, we, we are appealing that, but we did um indicate in response to the staff's report that um, if. We were to succeed in that appeal, um, because all of the expert testimony. In that application said that there was no adverse consequences on the water quality uh in the inland wetlands. Um, we would come back to you at that time and ask to extend if we felt it was necessary at that point. Um, for now, we're going to honor that twenty-five foot buffer um that was imposed or twenty foot, but whatever is twenty, twenty-five foot buffer. You know, the stormwater system that we're proposing now is leaps and bounds. A better system than what was originally approved. Um, so I guess my question for, for the commission is. Um, and again, I'm happy to have a dialogue about it, because I want to, I, I really do want to solve these problems tonight, hopefully. Because we want to get that wall up, we'd love to have that wall up before holidays, um. Why would you take a sub, what I'll call a subpar system? When inland wetlands Conservation Commission has already approved the um, the underground detention basin? Um, again, this site.
It's not the underground detention basin, it's uh what it allows and it allows an expansion. Uh, of, of use on the property. That's our concern. We want you to earn that. By uh doing the things that uh will, will take care of uh the sound, the dust issues. Uh, the neighbors have complained about. I personally also uh have no problem with your storing piping. Uh, uh, out, you know, out, outside.
Yeah, I mean, I think metal on metal will still make sound, but uh, the um underground uh retention, is that incompatible with, say, running a fence along the edge of the pavement? Oh, sorry.
So the detention system, just, just a little background on that, the reason uh the above-ground system was uh basically. Uh, the, the detention system was uh originally kind of. Concluded is because it is a lot cheaper to build the above-ground detention basin. Obviously, it comes with a lot more operation and maintenance costs and. Um, there's just a greater chance of failure with that type of system because all of the sediments from the property. Ultimately runoff into that basin. Um, and then as the basin fills with sediments, it needs to be, those sediments need to be removed to maintain. Uh, basically the drainage capacity of that. When they first moved into the site. Uh, again, I, I am from Lantec, I wasn't here in two thousand eighteen during the initial approval. But my understanding was that the building after uh. Basically taking it over from uh the state of Connecticut, as you can imagine, needed significant capital um investment. Um, so the idea to build uh the, the uh above-ground system, um detention basin. Um, was kind of a way at, at the time to uh. Defray some of the costs associated with that. Now they're, you know, now that they've fixed issues with the building, the idea is to. Put in a system that will function, you know, first of all, better from a stormwater perspective. Um, because it will collect uh all of the silt and runoff. And be more manageable because rather than digging it out of a basin, you'll be able to uh remove it from uh the hydro, hydrodynamic separator. Uh, there was a question brought up earlier. The system is uh designed for H one, H twenty loading, which means that you can drive over it, park on it, that is not, uh, that is not an issue. Um, it, it just, from a technical standpoint and from a cost standpoint, doesn't really make sense to install. A lesser system um to become compliant with the special permit it to, that's, you know, basically uh. You know, to have to build that detention basin and then come back in the future and remove it and build. You know, a concrete gallery system that's already been approved by not just the Conservation Commission. But also uh the uh town engineer. Uh, from, from professional uh opinion, it's just a better system. Um, the reason why that would be paved, because pavement is actually a dust. It does prevent dust if you have an area that's not paved, obviously, you know, it can be rutted out. Um, per se, and you know, when it dries out, it does cut, it does start to create dust. Um, and uh it, it's just from a maintenance perspective, it, it would be. Advantageous for not only Penna, but the neighbors to have that area paved so that they can come out and, you know, sweep it. With a sweeper um and basically manage dust that way. It, it's really a better, best management practice. For managing dust across the site.
Brian, can I, can I?
One second.
Yeah, just one quick follow-up on that. So um, from what I heard in your, your description, these um uh underground um whole tech. Uh, system is quite robust and handle the, the heavyweight. Um, is it possible to install a fence above? Those systems, so if the site were to be restricted in the amount of usable space as to not have an expansion. Would the system proposed be installable for a fence? Put along as a buffer along, I guess this is the eastern portion. Between that edge of pavement and blue section that's up on the screen right now. That's, that's the question I have, is if the fence can run along that light gray edge of pavement line.
Uh, well, I don't think you'd sink a fence in there, but there are other types of barriers that we could install to make sure that that blue. Line isn't expanded upon. Obviously, we don't have approval to do that uh with the commission, Conservation Commission. Um, at this point either. Um, so, you know, whatever type of barrier, there is a curbing. Um, that is proposed in that area. Um, again, this would be, you know, we'd be shifting the parking there. Um, so that in itself would be, you know, there would be a part, a row of parking. With a curb line or, and a curb line over that blue, at the edge of that blue area, so we can.
Sure, we could put some sort of like mafia block or jersey barrier uh along the curb so that you're sure that a. Truck is not gonna continuously edge.
Yep.
Out another inch, another inch, and then, and then a year later, we're, we're ten feet into it, we, we can certainly.
Thank you, yeah.
We can monument that is what we would do in some type of. You know, barrier that you can make sure is not being extended or um cheated on.
And to your point, I, I don't want it to necessarily lead to regrading that causes you have to go back and get other.
Brian, can you, can I think this is maybe wasn't really touched on at all? So um, I, the, the site plan I have pulled up, so you have. The, the bins to the um top of the screen and that's where you propose to relocate all the materials on the left is. Outdoor storage, which I'm assuming is where you're talking about the pipes and something else.
Co- correct, it's, it's mostly inner, inner materials. Pipes, manhole covers, uh ring risers. Um, you know, stuff that is stocked and then brought onto job sites. Um, just quite routinely.
So where I'm kind of going with this is say, you know, three years down the road, um. If, if we got a call about something and we went out and then my. Question could slash concern is. Where that you have it labeled area paved, is that gonna have, um, I know you have a small stockpile off the screener. But is that all gonna be open pavement, that everything that's not indicated is um. Proposed for any other structure or pile or something? I think that's kind of, because we're, I'm envisioning it is that everything is contained.
Can you show me in the uh, just, it, it showed me where.
Yeah, so everything kind of, is, is this all open? That's what, I mean, that's what's shown, but is that what's gonna happen?
That area would be paved, correct? It is now currently. So you can see the, you can see the line where it says edge of pavement, it's kind of faint.
Yeah. It just seems that that, I'm just, from a practical. Business operational standpoint, based on having been out there a couple of times, it. It seems like you're, maybe it's just people, by the way it was laid out, but it seems like. This would really take away space that you're utilizing now is, or necessary spaces part of your operation, that's.
Well, I think the middle part of that site, Steve, is currently the bins, right? So we're, we're moving all of those bins to the, to the top of the screen there, right, the northwest. Uh, side of the site. And when I say like this, this plan allows for better circulation, that's exactly what I mean, it's all paved, so. Less dust because it's pavement as opposed to dirt, and then it also allows the trucks to circulate. A little bit more easily as opposed to right now where the bins are right in the middle and you gotta scoot around them and you. You, you know, you gotta avoid one another.
No, I, I, that, I agree with that a hundred percent, but it just seems that. Based on the. Square footage of space that's occupied with something at this point, that this seems like. I don't know how you put what you have out there today and fit it into these areas, that's what is my question.
Well, it is, it is a very tight site, but as, as uh Jay Klein pointed out, and I haven't done the math or, or, or checked it out, but. Our bins are much larger now, um, they, they allow for more storage, so. A lot of that storage that when you went out there and, and walked the site and it was outside of the bins. Our plan is to keep everything in the bins. Our plan is with this plan to comply with the original condition where all earth material storage be located. Within the bins, they're now sufficient size based upon our, you know, this, this proposal. Um, so we're, you know, our hope is. And what we would agree to as a condition is, again, the same condition. All earth materials need to be stored in that, in those bins, you know, unless there's some sort of temporary stockpile, but not like, y- you know, um. Or for all intents and purposes, everything is located in those bins and it will open up everything else, because there is more storage.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I want to avoid, like I said, three years from now.
Yeah.
If I go out there and it looks.
I wasn't joking, I don't want to be back in front of you over this thing again.
Okay.
No, and I think that's just one quick point to make. I mean, initially when. This was, uh, obviously they were, you know, under the gun to move to this site. You know, I'm not gonna say there wasn't any growing pains, but now. We've seen site operations, we've a- addressed kind of the concerns of the neighbors and we've, we've gone to the drawing board. With our site plan. Um, trying to present something that really mitigates all of the. Impacts to the neighbors, but also allows Penna to operate in a more efficient manner. Um, and, and, and also to provide guardrails, uh, you know, tha- that Attorney Klein was talking about. Um, you know, one of the things, is every time there is an emergency, there are, there is documentation. Uh, through time cards, obviously, because when people clock in for an emergency, they punch time clock. And there's also work orders that go and billing, so there is records of when emergencies are happening. Um, you know, do, do business records, so. If that's something we need to provide and to show those types of information, when and where, that, that's, that can be provided.
I think that gets to my annual affidavit proposal, um. That, that I made, if, if that's something that the commission wants to see, that we can provide the staff that we're. You know, we go through each of the conditions and i- identify how we're in compliance with it annually. Um, you know, we're, we're happy to do that and work with staff on it.
I would think initially we'd like to see it uh quarterly. Once uh, once uh, uh, there's trust. I think.
That's fine, quarterly affidavit, I think is, is fine, um, and. Yeah.
Uh, if you previously said that all of your operations.
you previously said that all of your operations are emergency, though. So the thing about um documenting all the emergency work, I'm not sure I fully understand that if ever, and that's why some of the original conditions don't make sense to me if if all you do is emergency work.
Well, I I guess there's the handful of plans, you know, road work, utility work, that may not be typically emergency, but as Mr. Penna explained to you, right now, we've got three emergencies um that are going to require work for you know, over twenty-four hours on each of them. So any work that happens after hours is emergency work. Um, they're not open on weekends. Um, they're only there on weekends if there's an emergency call.
Uh, it sounds like from what the neighbors have experienced and from what you originally described as the business that the, the reason some of this is problematic is because maybe ninety-nine percent of the nature of your business is emergency. So
I I think, as I said, there was five hundred emergency calls and on average over the past three years, so five hundred each year. So um, that's, you you know, uh uh again, it's an active site that we have to respond to, which is again, why we're trying to get better circulation on there and make it more workable because the easier site it is to utilize, the quieter it will be.
Sure. Steve, I started to ask this question at a prior meeting and we sort of deferred until tonight. What have their assessed and contingent fines been since the notice of violation in twenty twenty-four for the violations over the last seven years?
I don't know if he's actually, I don't think there's been anything assessed that that I'm pretty positive of. I don't even know if there was a contingent fine place. Typically, the process with, and I don't recall, I'm assuming uh was Attorney Oberus, who is the hearing officer for this one, uh, given the date. I'm sorry?
Attorney Oberus seems allergic to fines.
I was gonna say, he his typical process is if if they're, the applicant is actively seeking a remedy to the problem, then he typically does not in- issue any fines, especially if they're, you know, they had submitted the application to the commission at that stage.
I'd say uh all, since a big part of this is trust and you know, you have to take a leap of faith and uh now this new attorney is involved, and if there's a quarterly affidavit and all these other things, maybe trust will be improved, but I think there's also an issue of consequences. Um, so while we don't have direct oversight you know, in any way over how the zoning violations are are meted out, if you could pass on at least a request from one commissioner that there actually be consequences for what what happened. I would appreciate that.
Certainly.
I I agree with Anna, but I think um it's worth uh, not tonight, but it's worth the conversation among the commission members about um making really a formal recommendation regarding this, you know, I, many of us, Anna and myself, several others feel strongly about this issue of consequences. Uh, and I think we we need to get that uh in in information to the people who are adjudicating this.
I mean, I'd also like to the point of trust, I I take the points about deferring to the experts here, but um like when we discuss the impulse events, the answer for how those were going to be mitigated was that it would be compliance with policy uh on on behalf of of the Penna company. So I think it kind of speaks like the question of trust and like speaks directly to some of the recommendations in the report. And how uh how much we believe that it will mitigate the problem.
So where do we go from here?
Um, if if I can say something about, I I know there haven't been any fines imposed and and Mr. Penna is uh is appreciative of that, but he is um, he uh in order to show that, you know, he's, he's got stake in the game, he is willing to make a charitable donation to a charity in Norwalk, a significant amount as kind of a part of his slap on the wrist, um, makes him feel good and it's um, and it's something. I don't know if that's something that the commission is interested in. He'd probably do it anyways, but um, you know, we're not trying to skirt the regulations and the laws. We're trying to fix this problem. That's why we're here tonight. Um, we didn't, you know, we we didn't oppose your seeking a peer review. We welcomed it because we knew that they would confirm what we said and they have. Um, we're, we're proposing things that will fix this problem. Um, he is a good guy, a good business person. Um, and he wants to be a good neighbor, which is why he wants to put this acoustical barrier up. It is also, and I'll say it again, that the entire plan is very well thought out. To say that you're going to approve part of it and not all of it really handcuffs us to be able to show you that we're doing what we said we can do. Um, because it cuts down on the viability of the site. It's a small site for five hundred emergencies a year. Very small site. So we really need every inch of it. Um, and we we would, you know, really request that you approve the site plan as proposed with some reasonable conditions that would um that would allow for some safeguards that the commission is comfortable with.
Attorney Burnham, I don't know if you can answer this question, but the site plan, the way you have it proposed, if a truck comes in and it needs to go to one of those bins. Is it possible to count how many times that truck has to go in reverse before it pulls out of the site?
I get it. Again, it depends upon you know, whether or not we have the full site. Right now, there's good circulation where they could potentially go and pull right in and around. It it depends upon whether or not there's a really active site, how many trucks are on there. We can certainly try to manage it so that we reduce the amount of backups as much as possible. Um, certainly at night, when the first guy's on the, on on the, on the job site and there's no other trucks around, we can you know, we we can come up with a traffic pattern that will help us to reduce the amount of backups that are necessary for sure.
So the truck pulls in, let's say there's nobody else there. He goes to one of the bins. There's a loader there, I would assume that's loading the stuff onto his truck.
Right.
Does the loader beep every time it backs up to put stuff in the truck? So.
Can they like turn? Type of recommend, recommended, recommended audible backup alarm uh that the uh acoustic engineer recommended where it takes the ambient uh level and only beeps loud enough so that someone in close proximity can hear it. So it doesn't beep at a constant higher level. It takes into account the 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 ambient background noise. So it's a very quiet area. I think Steve, maybe you can help with this, but I think it only decreases five decibels above that. So you just basically have an audible range in close proximity. But it's measuring the outside.
Yeah, given that one side of the property is close to the Merritt Parkway, which I don't think is that active during the three hours of the night. It would seem then that ambient noise would be very low. So then the backup sound from the loader and truck should be relatively clo- quiet. I completely appreciate it. You know, the workers are out on I ninety-five. It needed to be louder, but I think having some you know, number of backups or fewer by if your new design helps that situation, it might, you know, be good for your case. You see what I'm saying? My
Mitigation, yeah.
It's like you have a great driveway, is it three-point turn, a two-point turn, you know, one spin around?
Well, maybe Brian can pull up the site plan and kind of scroll over how they envision it.
Yeah, so our, our goal was to keep when we did the design. So the idea was obviously the trucks would come in here. Depending on the bin they were going to empty in. They would turn, make a turn. Basically drop the material either directly in the bin or on the ground and the loader would fill the bin. And then they could pull away. So it would really just be a three-point turn to get out of there. The only, the only time it would really create a beeping noise is if it was going to go back in back anytime it backs up. So, uh, hold on one second. I'm sorry, I'm not showing. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And your cursor.
So it would, it would come in. This is why we kept this part of the yard open. So it'd come in and then put depending on the the bin would back up and either droply, directly drop it into the bin or drop it onto the ground where the loader would, you know, because obviously these bins are, you know, if they're full, the the loader's going to push that up. And then it would come out and basically um come, you know, go out. So it it, best case scenario would be a three-point turn. Similarly, if it was going to come in and get loaded, uh, we tried to keep this area, so it'd come in and make a similar turn, and then the loader would come out and load the truck. Um, you know, obviously the minimizing the amount of turns as possible.
And for emergency calls at night, I just spoke with John and you know, we we can accept a condition of approval that says that we cannot um, dump material into the bins in the middle of the night. We we may, we may need to take it out, but when we come back to the site after the emergency is over and we have more materials, we will, we don't need to back into the bins to dump it. We can take care of that during working hours.
Which the workers will love because then that means they can just park their trucks full rather than have to empty the truck.
These Penna-owned trucks?
Uh, a lot of them are Penna-owned trucks, but we also
Something with the beepers on those, but the other ones are going to be regulation beepers.
Well, well, we have um subcontractors that are very regularly used and and we're going to retrofit those trucks as well. Now, will there be the occasional truck that comes on site that has not been retrofitted? Yes. You know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna lie about that, but all of his trucks and all of his primary subcontractors that do the majority of their work will be retrofitted with these beepers.
And considering that there are so many emergencies, five hundred a year, which seems to be a large part of the problem. Would the organization be willing to provide twenty-four hour supervision on the site to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to do? I think that's very important.
We, we can certainly install a number of cameras to monitor it. Um, but to, you know, so again, there's a two-hour turnaround time. If you get a call at one thirty in the morning, you've got to be out to that site by three thirty. It may be in Greenwich, it may be in Bridgeport, there may be traffic. It could be, you know, anywhere where we need to go. So to have twenty-four hour, you know, we we don't have somebody who can sleep on site. Um, so um, I I think what 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 I would propose is to work with staff to um impose some cameras, uh install some cameras that um show the site. And then are, you know, that that the, you know, the video is saved for a period of time. And then if there's complaints logged at certain times on the Google spreadsheet that we heard about, then we can go back to the cam, to the, to the video and see what happened.
Construction sites have twenty-four hour security. I mean, that's not unusual.
Well, those are active construction sites. This is not, it's a contractor's yard. This is not a construction site. You know, that reference to no, no construction and the noise ordinance, this is not construction. It's, it's a contractor's yard.
As a contractor's yard, if you have five hundred emergencies, that's
So, so let me just clarify, let me just clarify one thing about the emergencies too. We keep saying five hundred. That doesn't mean five hundred that occur outside of the normal operations of the yard. The special permit has operating hours within the yard. So if two-thirds of those happen during the normal day, that's within the the normal op- hours of operation. Yeah, percentage of those cu- occur outside of the normal operating hours. It's like if a firehouse has, you know, six hundred calls a year, how many of those calls happen between eight and five? And how many of those happen, you know, between five and eight in the morning? That's, that's basically what we're saying. So they can have emergencies in the middle of the day, which routinely happen.
Do you have a sense of how many are during the day versus at night versus weekends? Do you have a sense of?
I I mean, we, I'm sure, I'm sure we could, it could be part of the affidavit if you want, when we, when we start submitting it, I'm sure we, we have records of it, but we don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine the neighbors are sensitive to the ones outside of normal hours, of course, but yeah.
And again, their emergencies, so you know, that could fluctuate because indeed the nature that they are, they're strictly emergency, so we don't sure, they're not, you know, they're not playing the bet. So
Yep.
Uh, you know, we gave you data today and you know, whatever, you're, you know, they come what they, what they do.
Sure, thank you.
I think we're getting hung up, hung up in the weeds here.
Yep.
We ready to close the public hearing at this point?
Yeah, I think you did that piece of it. I think, well, yeah, you closed public comment and you closed the hearing. Um, my recommendation would be not to vote on this tonight. I'd like to look at the conditions a little differently.
Absolutely, really.
And then
I think we should close the public hearing and take a break.
Well, give Attorney Burnham an opportunity to make some closing.
I think I've said enough. I appreciate your time. Um, you know, we, we, we really are trying to solve this problem and we think we've come up with a good plan. We hope you agree with us. Um, we are, um, Mr. Penna and his team are extremely reasonable. Um, and we, we just, we, we, we wanna, we wanna coexist, right? Um, so um, thank you very much for your time and we hope you approve the plan as submitted because we think it's going to make a drastic difference on everybody's life involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it worthwhile for Commissioner, anything pressing to maybe noted to Steve of like things to add to conditions when we come back this week? We still have those things that we can reference back to.
Pardon me?
So is it worthwhile for us to just briefly say some of the things we want to flag for Steve? So when we come back in a few weeks, he's got the list of all the things we wanted to come back to. Does that make sense?
I think if it's possible.
Okay.
If it's possible, um.
So like
Give us the opportunity to uh, attest um, their, their willingness uh initially to, to um uh perform the things that are needed to meet uh what what currently exists in their existing approval. I think that would be
Yep.
Clearly, that would be one.
I don't see how we can do that. I don't see.
Well, but Stephen, Stephen Stafford will get it.
Okay. Yeah.
Like cameras were discussed frequently about a a possible negotiator, but um, given that sound events are the the most, one of the most troublesome things, like figuring out some way in an automated fashion, like not the neighbors complaining, but they're, you know, you can monitor sound, you can see when it reaches above a certain decibel and having that be automated in some fashion.
I can tell you, I have baby cameras set up everywhere in my house and I can give you a record of all the times that a particular, like a cry versus a this versus that happens, like I think whatever cameras they
Cameras.
We want baby cameras. They need to be kids, not just like a grainy nineteen eighties security video, but like a sound record from my cameras type, or there can be an alert, you know, this is this was a sound thing over eighty decibels. What was that? What was that about? Who did it? What's the consequence? I'd also like the, the process, materials processing thing. To come back to that, I'm not sure if we heard that, that that's happening. That wasn't part of the original permit. Uh, the dust thing.
Yeah.
All the thing.
So it's related to the screening. Sorry, Steve, we're throwing a lot at you quick.
Okay, so now we're at, we're closing the public hearing, correct? Everybody?
Yes.
So the public hearing is now closed. We will come back to this to vote on uh, on approval or denial at our next meeting. And now
You need a motion? Or is that? We need a motion to
I think it probably is the best approach of that.
Is it a, a motion to continue?
Motion to close the public hearing and then not take any action.
Seconded.
Okay. How about, you want to do a roll call?
I think you could do a, well, yeah, probably should since we have people scatter about.
Right.
Harvey's not seated for this, right? Because of the site visit? Or is that?
Probably the safest bet.
Okay.
That was, you know, tied to this. I do think that makes sense.
You were allowed to participate at least now. Sounds good. Yep.
Uh, I'll do roll, uh, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Shawman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
He also was in the last hearing.
Yeah, that was a separate application, but I think the site walk was informative.
I see.
How about I had stand in that?
Okay.
Sorry, Harvey.
You sure?
Okay, now. I think we need to take a break.
How long would you like?
Cause I can no longer feel my feet.
Wanna do ten minutes?
Let's do ten minutes.
Nine thirty.
Yeah, it's nine seventeen thirteen minutes.
Nine thirty PM.
Okay. The zoning commission is. Back in uh order. Our next matter is twenty twenty five dash. Fifty six S P slash ham. Alpha five M K nineteen day LLC nineteen day street. Special permit for proposed multi family building with thirty two units. The public hearing. And recommended action. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. Our office is ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. We represent the owner and applicant Alpha Five M K nineteen day LL Street LLC. And a representative of the owner is online tonight with us. In addition, Groteer of Beinfield Architects Senior Associate is present. Manny Silva, a professional engineer with Rose Tiso, the civil engineering firm is present. As is Greg Del Rio, a professional engineer with Hardisty and Hanover. And his firm conducted the traffic engineering review and traffic analysis for the proposal. Just by way of background, the application for coastal site plan was submitted July fifteenth. Application for site plan review was submitted July twenty ninth, and then an application for special permit relating to a parking waiver was submitted on a, on August sixth. Neighbors within a hundred feet of the property were notified by certificate of mailing on July twenty fourth of the coastal site plan. Neighbors were notified on July thirtieth of the site plan application, again by certificate of mailing. And then neighbors were notified on August seventh um by certificate of mailing for the filing of the special permit. All of those certificates were returned to staff and should be part of the permanent file. Neighbors were notified of tonight's hearing by certified mail return receipt requested on October eighth. And the green cards, any return certifies. And USPS information on letters for which we did not receive either the letter back or the green card were delivered to staff today and should be part of the permanent file. Finally, two signs were posted on the property on October seventh, one on Day Street and one on Raymond Street. To advise of the date and time of the public hearing, those signs remain in place today and those signs were posted in accordance with your regulations. So the applicant is Alpha Five M K nineteen day LLC. The property is nineteen day street. It is District Two, Block fifty eight, Lot forty four. It is owned C D four and it is within the the boundary of the coastal area management zone. Because it is within a thousand feet of the Norwalk Harbor, which is the coastal resource to the east of the property. However, the property is separated from that coastal resource by sidewalks, curbs, streets, developed park properties. Parking lots and other uh uses. The lot size is one point one four acres. And at this point, if one of the members of our team who are joining remotely could screen share the survey, that would be great. While that is happening, we toward. See maybe um either Manny or, well, great. Hey, so here's the existing condition site plan. There are currently three structures on the site. There is a two story small structure along Day Street. That was constructed in twenty seventeen. First floor generally houses bicycle storage and there's small apartment above. The, at the western portion of the property noted as existing building A. That's a two story structure constructed in nineteen forty five. There is office and a first floor distillery in that property, in that building. And the third building on the property is a five story residential building that fronts on both Raymond and Day Streets, which contains fifty six apartments. There are seventy six uh existing parking spaces on the site. And two curb cuts existing which will remain unchanged, both from Day Street. The applications before you this evening, site plan, coastal site plan and special permit. Relate to the construction use and occupancy of a new structure containing thirty two apartment units. To be constructed generally over the parking area that's depicted on plan. So if someone could. Certainly, if someone could screen share the site plan from our um development team, that would be helpful. Originally, the applications contemplated a forty unit apartment complex, but that number was reduced to thirty two. Um over the course of time over the past few weeks. So the plan that's before you generally shows the site plan, existing building B, the fifty six unit apartment building will remain. The small two story structure that fronts on Day Street would be demolished. As would the large, uh larger um two story structure in the rear that dates to nineteen forty five. In its place, construct six story thirty two apartment with first floor leasing office. New utilities, drainage and landscaping are proposed. Solar panels are proposed on the roof. And um we're increasing the parking on site by about twelve spaces from seventy, by about fourteen, from seventy four spaces to eighty eight. Plus an additional ten parking spaces tandem, but those can't be counted toward our parking requirements. In the new building of the thirty two units, seventeen or one bedroom, eleven or two bedroom for our three bedroom. There will be one three bedroom affordable unit and one one bedroom affordable unit. And this is all set forth in the draft of a affordability plan that was submitted. Along with the architectural plans that denote the location of those two affordable units. The units will be at sixty percent S M I per section six point one two of the code. And this is important because this allows the parking ratio in the new building to be at a one to one ratio, one space per. Sixty percent A M I, excuse me, sixty percent S M I, section six twelve of the code. And this is important because it allows the ratio to be one to one, one parking space per unit. The fifty six unit building B, as shown on the site plan, has a different parking ratio because it was constructed prior to the new regulations. That building has a parking ratio of one space per three, one point three spaces per every, per dwelling unit. And that is because the affordable units in that structure, and there are six, were calculated at eighty percent um. Rather than sixty percent. So that brings us to just a brief explanation of the parking. The new building that we propose requires seventy three spa, requires seventy three spaces, excuse me. The existing building requires seventy three spaces, one point three spaces times fifty six, seventy three spaces. The new building, which will have the affordable units at sixty percent uh S M I. That building requires thirty two spaces for the apartments and one space for the first floor leasing. So thirty three spaces are required for the new building. Therefore, a total of one hundred six spaces are required on site. This total can be reduced by ten percent because the structure and the, and the property is within a quarter mile of the South Norwalk train station. So when you reduce it by ten percent, it brings the parking required on site to ninety six. We have asked for a special permit application to be reviewed and approved by this commission. Because we are able to accommodate eighty eight parking spaces on site. Hence, we have a deficiency of eight spaces. However, that does not take into consideration the ten tandem spaces that we're showing on, as it being available on property. Special permit for parking waiver is in section four point three point twelve point B six of the new code. And under that special permit requirement, there are additional standards beyond the typical special permit standards in your code. One is that property must be in a C D four or another zone. This is in the C D four zone, so it's eligible for the reduction. It must be within a half mile of the South Norwalk train station. This is within a quarter mile, so it meets that requirement. It must, the request must be reviewed and approved by your transportation, mobility and parking department, which it has been, and that agency has issued its sign off. Uh there are other standards that mu- must be met that are noted in our moving papers, but since the hour is late, I won't go through each and every one of them. However, two of them are important. One is that is the development beneficial to the neighborhood and we submit that it is. It provides new residences, including two affordables. New residents to patronize South Norwalk businesses and it activates the street, both Day Street and Raymond Street. Furthermore, public policy implemented by the enactment of your zoning regulations looks to um. Lessen the use of automobiles and in favor of public transportation, walkability and use of bikes. You have consistently suggested and uh implemented in your regulations, reduced parking requirements, particularly in the urban centers, including South Norwalk. So our request for special permit to reduce the parking is consistent with those goals and the standards for the special permit for the parking waiver. The proposal before you has received the approval from the fire department, South Norwalk Electric and Water, the health department, transportation, mobility and parking. And your design review consultant BFJ has recommended approval with certain conditions. We were still waiting through approval of the Water Pollution Control Authority and Public Works. But if you deem it appropriate to approve the applications before you, those concerned will be made conditions of approval. Before we move to Mr. Silva and then Mr. Groteer and Mr. Del Rio. We have received some comments from tenants and we'd like to address them. Of course, the landlord must and will abide by whatever its lease obligations are to both its residential and commercial tenant. It understands that the tenant's leasehold rights include the right of a covenant of quiet enjoyment. The building will be slab on grade, so that reduces noise and interruption with the site. Not all tenants have absolute right to parking spaces on the property. Uh some tenants don't have vehicles and basically when we've driven by the site, my, from my client's. Um analysis of his, the parking use of the site, about sixty five of the seventy six parking spaces are generally used daily. As to noise, the applicant owner has the obligation to abide by the city noise ordinance during construction. And if one believes there is a violation, there are mechanisms in to, in place to address that, as you heard at length with the prior hearing. My client had communicated with the owner of the distillery to advisement of the project and also to indicate that a construction timetable is not imminent or immediate. Should approvals be secured, it is going to take several months to secure this physical zoning permit, the physical building permit. To create construction documents, to commence the demolition process and then commence construction. We will work cooperatively with the residential and commercial tenants prior to commencement of construction and keep them advised of the status. Um we will be diligent and attentive to manage the tenants' needs and concerns during construction. And will implement a robust construction management plan. And the rear building would likely be demolished first, so construction workers would likely park there during construction. We have also discussed this proposal with uh at length with transportation, mobility and parking as it relates to how uh construction would impact. Um operations on Day Street and Raymond Street. And we will have to work with them to develop a construction management plan in connection with those roadways. I just would like to advise the commission, which I'm sure you're already aware. That while I'm certain that the tenant's comments are, uh they're heartfelt, they're um very significant to them. They are, have not gone unnoticed by my client. This commission doesn't have the ability or the jurisdiction to evaluate or analyze or consider landlord tenant relationships as part of this application. And the resident, um and some of the residential leases, as a matter of fact, do have certain buyout provisions, so that gives tenants added protection in the event. That there are issues coming forward in connection with construction. Uh so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Silva of Rose Tiso.
Attorney, before you do, just one quick question. Um. How do you foresee the tandem spaces working?
That's going to be managed by our management company. Uh it it it'll work as well as we allow it to work and it's, if it doesn't work in those ten spaces, just. Won't come to pass, but we did not include them in the parking calculations since they're not. Available to us for parking compliance purposes.
Thank you. And they're counted as ten um tandem spaces, but it would. You're right, you park the maximum of twenty years, right?
Be ten more above the, we we have a lot for eighty eight spaces, those are valid spaces, ten more would bring it to ninety.
Oh, okay. So yeah, I I thought it was uh ten tandem spaces being each tandem space parks two vehicles, is that?
Well, there's a space and a space behind it.
Right, right. Yes, I think you're saying the same thing.
Right.
Ideally, those would be leased to a unit with two or more.
Sure.
A double or a triple unit would make the most sense.
And as I understand, the leases, uh the year long leases for the residential tenants do have riders with respect to parking and how parking spaces can or can't be leased. So at this point, I'd like Mr. Silva to come on and he could walk you through the, the site plan, um stormwater management and any other um. Site specific questions that you may have. We're happy to answer any questions at any time. And once Mr. Silva is finished, he will turn it over to Colin Groteer of Beinfield Engineering at Beinfield Architecture, followed by Greg Del Rio. We look forward to public comment and reserve some time at the end for rebuttal and summation.
Good evening. My name is Manny Silva from Rose Tiso and Company at thirty five Brentwood Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. Uh representing the applicant as a civil engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. Um as uh Attorney Suchi has uh. Introduce, introduced a project of, this is an aerial view of the existing site. With uh the building and the uh rooftop amenity space, the small building which we're gonna demo here near the. Day Street and then the brewery here in the back, which will come down, which is the older um building. Um here's kind of like a, a kind of a street view of the property currently today. Um and then um what we have is uh our site plan. Um which will have the entrance and exit staying as existing. Um and then you'll circulate coming in and out through here. There, our new building. Um will be here above the uh building C, which is outlined here and 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 shaded. Um we will have some, where would the uh building A is being demolished, we will be supplementing parking here, but it will be with pervious pavers. About seven thousand two hundred square feet of pervious pavers. Um and that will bring our impervious area from the existing site to the proposed site, as you see here on the site plan, will be reduced by slightly. Um we'll have some new uh fencing going along the, the uh property lines here to screen the property from the parking. Um some uh chain link fence with black uh, black privacy slats. Um we'll have um some E V spaces here in this area around the transformers. Um these E V spaces um will have uh pedestal type E V spots with two chargers on each side and they'll. And then some areas like here that will be back to back, which will be servicing four vehicles here, two here and another. Five vehicles here. Um again, we have. The parking throughout the, the site as existing, except that we have some new spaces here where the brewery was, and then here's those ten, ten tandem spaces in front. Um as far as uh the drainage, the site. Was already uh designed to uh city of Norwalk standards, but we do have to do some modifications to the drainage. So right now. The site, the water rains on the site and then it's collected uh in various catch basins. And then goes through an underground gallery system, but since we're gonna have a portion of the building that's going over the existing gallery system, we'll have to relocate some of these galleries. From underneath the building here um to here. Um so the site will continue to have a good uh water quality and volume control. Um the site will have um. As you can see here, um the post will be the discharge from the site. Uh because it's in a control, it'll be on the, in the, inside the galleries, the water gets collected. Cooled, put in the galleries and that's infiltrated into the ground um instead of being conveyed out. So we only have about one point nine C F S, it's a two year storm, all the way up to the fifty year storm, which is a five inch or five point seven inch rainstorm in twenty four hours uh with six C F S. Um our galleries uh size is about four thousand cubic feet, which complies with the new stormwater. Uh manual uh from the D E P, um which would require about three thousand six hundred. Um the property during construction will also have soil erosion controls to control any kind of. Sediment or debris going into the stormwater system or off property during construction. Um the site will be uh have some silt fence around the entire property so that any mud or anything during a rainstorm, while the site is unstabilized, will, will, will not trespass over the property and stay on property. And then we'll have silt sacks within. The uh catch basins themselves and that's to filter water before that goes into our stormwater system. Um and so that when we do stabilize the site and have it landscaping uh and paved, uh we, we'll pull those silt sacks out and the uh, the system itself. Will be clean and ready to go like uh, like it was new on day one. Um we have an anti-tracking pad here to. Knock any mud or any debris off of the wheels from the vehicles and not track that into Day Street. Um that's here, there's a detail here, it's basically a large stone pad. Um and then back here we'll have a uh. Stockpile stabilization area, um so that if you have some stockpiled material, it'll be surrounded by a silt fence. Again, to, to filter that, any, any water coming off of that. And then uh you'll have a silt fence, not just around the stockpile, but then around the uh perimeter also. Um. Next will be the ornamental landscaping plan. Um we have some evergreens here along the. Along our neighbor here, which is the church to, to uh our south. Um and then we have the fencing, like I said, around. All the, all sides here. Um and then we'll have some ornamental uh. Landscaping along the base of the existing building B. We'll have some tree, we'll have street trees within the parking area. Um which is going to be compliant to your zoning regulations to have an island every uh seven spaces or ten spaces or so. Um and these will be um. Here in the plant list, we have uh dogwoods, some red maples, some um and uh some flowering dogwoods. And then up front here, we have. And then up front here, we have some planters and some uh opportunity to have some landscaping here under the building, even though um, this area is going to be shaded, we have some uh shade tolerant uh mountain laurel and spreading yews uh to kind of give some color to the front here. Uh, again, Day Street and Raymond was recently done when this project was built um some years ago. Um, it was redone and then we have these, we have street trees planted out on Day Street and Raymond, which will remain and protected um in their um tr- tree wells here out front. Um, we then have our detail sheet, which basically just has standard details. All our catch basins have snouts and that's added to our treatment train so that one water goes in the catch basins, oils and debris get caught right at the, at the point that it comes into our system and doesn't get conveyed out into our galleries or even out into um the town system. Our, our system disconnects our runoff from the uh City of Norwalk's uh stormwater system, so we are completely compliant with MS four. Um, and then here on the next detail sheet, we have our driveway ramps, uh sidewalk ramps, and then how we uh protect our trees during uh construction. Um, our lighting plan uh here on SP seven, you can see that we are compliant with our point-to-point uh no spillage over the property line uh greater than uh the minimum that's required by zoning. Um, and then underneath uh, these are all going to be night sky compliant with full cutoffs uh similar to what's there today. Um, and then we'll have the, here is the detail of the uni- uh of the fixture that we'll be using. Um, and then underneath the building itself, we'll have some uh recessed cans in here to eliminate underneath the building itself. Um, if there, I think that's the presentation uh for site plan right now. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Silva? Okay, then.
You, you have to wait till after this is.
Yeah. So next up would be Colin Grothier of Beinfield Architecture.
Thanks very much, Liz Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this application. We're back with you uh again. So I believe I already gave a proposal on the design. Uh, by and large, it's essentially the same building that you saw previously. Can everybody see my screen? Wait, after we get it up there this time?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so the, the, the building is uh the five-story building with the uh, with the loft and the gable, um brick facade. Uh, we've got the two um parking entries, entry and exit below there. There's a stairwell kind of fronting the existing building. There's a breezeway in between with a pergola. Uh, we've got a little courtyard that um Manny shared before. Kind of give you a little bit more of a detail there, so we can see that uh we've got shade tolerant landscaping in these areas underneath and kind of a, a public access way for ingress and egress to the building. And then the main uh lobby is kind of elevated above the street, which is a nice um pedestrian-friendly um feature that allows you to enter the lobby and feel like you're not right out on the street, also gives you a little bit of shelter if you're waiting for uh a ride-hailing service like an Uber or a pickup or drop-off for a pack of service or meal delivery. Um, you can wait out there up front undercover, and so that's kind of a nice uh, you know, byproduct feature of a scenario like this, with a nice staircase that leads you down to the public sidewalk uh and some landscaping around the corners, kind of feel like a, a nice contained uh plaza underneath the building. You've got your leasing office right inside here, fronting on the street, creating a little bit of um friendly presence uh on the street and some activity. Uh, and then the mailroom and, and tenant entry for the new building is, is here as well. Uh, and bike storage is, I believe, was previously kind of over here. Uh, not really covered and we've moved that internal, uh, this little nook and back very close to where it is currently uh in the site plan. Um, we've also addressed some concerns about signage on the building that were brought up by BFJ rather than having a sign uh up here. Uh, we've relocated it above the doors, so that would be a prominent entry sign, uh, address number as well. Uh, you can also see how the, this, that's a terrace. The side facing down Day Street was um revised to include a decorative panel system with some contrasting colors, so there's a little bit more visual interest there. Uh, it's important to note that is on a property line, so there's very little we can do uh with the openings. That's for the Norwalk zoning, you're allowed to go uh up to the side yard setback. Um, so we've held off slightly, but we still not enough to have uh functional openings there, so we're, we're enlightening it pretty much with the best we can. Creating some faux windows with the shading, very similar to uh what was done in brick with the uh, the backyard over by um Colin Grill there uh on West Ave and uh, and what's, what was done at um yeah, what, the address there, seventeen now Monroe Street. And we're building that facing down Chestnut Street. Um, kind of looking back at the massing of the building, it's uh the four stories of brick and then it steps back to this uh shed shed roof structure, shed roof dormers and gable structure. Very simple expression. Uh, we looked through the materials palette before, but it's a a simulated woodgrain cladding, uh, a lumier uh ribbed metal panel, uh gray brick. It's kind of a smooth finish. Got the um uh European-style windows uh with uh actually, it's shown in lap siding. I don't think we have lap siding, cable rails and then decorative wall-mounted lights kind of along the street to provide a little bit more uh architectural detail lighting. Backside. It was pretty much uh very similar. We're bringing that material that's up on the roof and continuing that down the building. And then you can kind of see where you're going to the uh sound view landing across the street there that's been faded in in the background, that's across from us and you can see the relative scale is very similar apart from the, the gable roof and then there's the roof terrace for the existing nineteen-day street building. Uh, so at a high level, that's uh, that's what, what's going on. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Grothier? Okay, hearing on last but not least, I'm Greg Del Rio of Hardisty in Hanover, and he can describe to what traffic analysis revealed.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Greg Del Rio, for the record, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and we performed a traffic evaluation uh for the pro- for the project. Uh, let's see if I can do quick screen share here to think it was like this. You should see the table now, I believe, showing our trip generation. Um, so we conducted a trip generation for the proposed use and in the document that was filed, it's uh, it was at the time assumed to be forty dwelling units. So these numbers reflect forty new units. Um, it's now thirty-two, so twenty, twenty percent reduction on these numbers, so the um trips at the driveway vehicular trips would be in the order of twelve in the morning, thirteen in the evening, uh with thirty-two dwelling units, those, those go down to ten and ten. Um, you can see the entries and the exits in the morning. Um, just highlighting that because that's what each driveway will see. So, you know, just for context, ten, ten trips over the hours, you know, one car every six minutes on average. Um, so it's very light use. Um, again, up here, all I'm saying is that the uh, there is an existing office use that's being removed uh which generated about five trips in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it's that increment. We're only adding about five more vehicles to what was there today. Um, I'm crossing out the distillery uh because that's only open, we heard Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, I think, so uh while that does generate extra trips in the evening on certain times, um, we didn't want to, you know, um, offset that because just to show that these numbers are very low and that they are not anticipated to um change operations or congestion in, in any perceivable way. It was very brief uh segment for me tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Del Rio? Okay, well, that concludes our presentation to you. We look forward to comments from the public. Be happy to answer them and, and respond. Um, I don't know if you want to, your uh design review consultant to weigh in?
That's what I was going to recommend, yeah. We, we, they've been waiting patiently for it. We're, we're turning it over to. Frank, I'm not sure who on your end wants to.
Uh, yeah, uh, you can hear me okay and
Yep.
Good. Uh, with me tonight is uh Suzanne uh from our office. Um, and she's on Suzanne Goldberg. And uh I'll just go through um our recommendations briefly. Uh, the applicant in this case has responded to some of them I can see this evening. And uh, if you don't mind, Suzanne's going to share right her, her screen. Uh, the first thing in our um uh memo to you uh is to just say that we had uh sent to you all um two previous uh design review memos. And I think uh those September twelfth and then October, October eighth, so this is a final uh memo based on uh their revised drawings that uh they sent to us last Thursday. Um, so uh I think I'll just highlight what we see as uh final, final issues. They've responded to uh quite a few of our previous issues. But the first one here is uh street frontage and landscaping. And uh I will uh get to a question for them in, in a minute, but we do think this is a key uh element because your you know, SOLO redevelopment plan design guidelines, they emphasize entry and gateway landscape should be used to define site access and reinforce a sense of arrival. The plans we got, um the site plan particularly that we looked at um just appears to show in all of the uh space, all of the landscape areas along Day Street, what looks to us like grass. I asked that as sort of a question uh because we think that that, if that's what that is in those different green areas on the front of the building, particularly the entrance um the entrance area between the uh, yeah, and also the green area between the existing building and the, and the new building, that area. If that's grass only, we don't think it meets the, the um uh design guidelines of, of the city. And also grass under the building, the new building in the northern part, uh that would have to be watered, it's not going to get much sunlight. Um, it seems to us that a mixture of shrubs in there and a real look at landscaping, how to emphasize that a little bit is very important to meet the design guidelines. Now, what I think I saw tonight in uh Manny Silva's um presentation as the engineer, the engineering drawings seem to have shrubbery. Um, so I don't know if that's the case. The site plan that Colin described did not. So we think it's very important and it's not very expensive to improve this fairly easily with uh shrubbery plantings in the front that obviously are suitable to areas of shade. Um, and then some type of maintenance uh for watering. Uh, but that would, that would significantly enhance uh this, we think, in terms of the guidelines uh for landscaping. So that's the major um issue we wanted to make sure of. And again, uh yours, we have found in the past that sometimes the site plan has been a little different than a site that send the, than the engineering, the civil engineering plans. And that was one of the things we've asked for before to make sure they, you know, that they do. They're both one in the same, and tonight I think that Manny's uh, again, civil engineering did show, so, show some shrubbery um in the front of the building. If that's the case, that's, that's very good and responds to our comment. So that's um, that's the first uh one thing that we, we wanted to emphasize. By the way, there's a very minor thing that um uh, the existing uh trees, um uh they should just be, just be consistent in both drawings. Some have tree wells, some don't. It's just the consistency uh issue that there, it's, it's fairly, um fairly minor. Um, the, the other thing, the item two in our, our memo is just a, a note on screening and landscaping. Um, they, we, we know that there's not, although I think Manny mentioned there was uh screening all around, but on the western side of the site where they're proposing to tear down the existing building, we did not see in the plans we got um any indication of a fence on the western side outlined here in the drawing in red of that area. The rest of the site is all um uh taken care of in terms of fencing and buffering with the neighboring sites and including they uh replaced the trees. And one of their earlier drawings did have all the trees um on the south end of the site and we're very happy that they did re- put them back in uh to the drawings. We think that's a real you know, that's a real improvement uh to, to the drawing. We also note that they um, they did um change the uh caliper uh that we saw from, of the trees and tree plantings from three to three and a half inches to, we had recommended, our landscape people had recommended three and a half to four. So they've done that. We, we think that that's a good um, a good response on on the screening and uh landscape buffers. Um, one thing in this area, um, and uh uh I think one of the commissioners asked a question about it, and that is the tandem uh parking spaces. Uh, we, we are not, we're just asking a question here because we don't want to um get into transportation too much. We do want to stick to simply the architectural the guidelines. Um, however, um as was mentioned earlier by uh Attorney Sachi, the the eighty-eight spaces being provided do not count those ten ti- tandem spots. So if they're not needed for the parking, they are a real opportunity to have a really landscaped area of a double alley of trees, for instance, and a real area for residents to have some passive open space uh recreation area. And the heat, that would, that would help um permeable surface on the site and uh also the sun, the heat island effect. So that's a question we have. Um, in our experience has been, I think, the same as probably other transportation engineers. Um, and that is tandem parking spots are cumbersome. They're hard to make work and function. You have to limit them to something like a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit where you have two cars. You can't have tandems work when you have different units having uh a space. You, 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 you can't, that just doesn't work. So we don't know if they need the tandem spaces. If they don't, we see a real opportunity in terms of the guidelines to have more landscaping and a, a real sort of more passive park area for the residents, but we leave that to the applicant um explaining to you the need for the tandem spaces, how they would work. They definitely would need some type of management plan to make them work. Uh, tandem spaces um are difficult to make work unless they're both used by the same household, basically. So it's just a, a question to them. Our third issue, signage, um.
Frank, one on, one quick thing to add there. I think you mentioned that the fencing, the lack of fencing in the prior plan on the western side. We also um in our memo discussed the need for uh either landscape buffers or wooden fencing around the transformers.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, which you can see in this area here, and that's stated in the design guidelines as well.
Right. Thanks, Suzanne. Um, and then the third one, signage, they have now uh changed and, and um in their presentation this evening. So I think um we had mentioned that the existing sign was about fifteen feet high. And uh so we're very happy to see that they have put, put signage uh over the entrance doors. We think that's uh we think that's, that's a response to our memo. Uh, because we, we realized there's, there's, this, this was, when we first saw this application, it looked like this building was an addition uh to the existing building. And it, in, in the, as it changed in, in the design, we realized this is two separate buildings, so it is good to have clear signage to the entrance to this building. It also raises the question of, you got it, the same address and how mail gets into this new building uh labeled nine, you know, labeled the same address nineteen-day as the old building with, with a separate mailroom. We're not sure. We leave that to the, we leave that to the applicant. It's not a, not a design issue, but the signage, signage is, so we're, we're happy to see that uh response. And um we raised just on, and we're also happy to see the response in our item four, which is um And, um, we raised just on, and we're also happy to see the response in our item four, which is, um. That they have now articulated, uh, the the north sort of wall of this structure. Which is, uh, and they're correct. Obviously, this is something that, um, uh, they can't put in real windows here. But they can, what they've done, their response to our memo, we think is a good one. But it comes down to also to, we think they ought to have on their material key, they have now four items. And we think they ought to add a fifth item, uh, that a little detail on the material that they're going to use in those eight. Um, sort of dark gray, uh, spaces that kind of mimic, uh, uh, windows, just so that you have those materials, uh, before you. And we had.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt you just while you're on on this one. For a a wall like this that's, uh, uh, facing it as it is and relatively blank. Is this something that's generally suitable for something like a public art mural or something in that vein? Is that something you've seen before?
Yes. Oh, yes. We, in fact, we we sort of suggested in a previous memo, um, two options there. One was, uh, uh, something of an art art nature. But my understanding was, um, from the memos, from what we received. That you've gone in the other, that this applicant has gone in the direction of, uh, not so much an artwork here. Which we suggested that's fine as long as it's, uh, approved. And I think you have an approving body that would look at any artwork on on the building. So we we think either one, uh, we're just saying that, uh, in this one, you ought to know the material being used. And if it's a piece of art, you need to make sure, uh, of of the approval process for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's the only thing there. Um, the, uh. The area where the covered bike storage is, uh, this is also just on on building materials. This is our understanding is, um, you know, to be inside now, you're moving it from outside to to inside. Um, it's just that the proposed location of it seemed to block the adjacent handicap parking space. Now, that may not, that may not, uh, apply anymore because you you may have moved it. You you may have moved it inside the building. I'm not sure because I think your plans have now been slightly, um, changed. Since we saw the set that was, uh, submitted on Thursday. It's a rather detailed, um, point. But just to make sure of it. And then our fifth concern was just the lighting. We were happy that you submitted, uh, uh, you know, a map showing that you comply. Uh, but we think you should show just a clear drawing. Uh, that's not necessarily photogrammetric, but just where are the lights so that they're on the site plan? Where are the lights on the building? Where are the lights on the, uh, on on the parking, the parking area? So that, uh, the commission has that, uh, clearly be before them. So we think that that it would help out here. So in in conclusion, um, we've just suggested, uh, we we think this is a good, uh, building. We think, uh, it could be approved or should be approved really. But we we recommended, uh, some, you know, a number of points here on our last page. A more significant landscaping along Day Street frontage is the most important one perhaps. And I think you may, I'm not sure of this. The applicant can answer this, I think, perhaps later. Uh, certainly it appeared to me what I saw tonight on the, uh, civil engineer planet. It appeared to have some scrubs there. I don't know, but I I I think you should have before you. Uh, before approval of the detail of that on the site plan. Um, and then coordination, as we said, between the landscape plan, uh, and the ground floor plan. Identification tree wells, that's a small item. Um, fencing landscape buffering on the western side of the property. I think they, we could eliminate this, um, uh, more prominent signage location. I think you've now, the applicants responded to that. And then a description of the materials on the facade and bike storage area and then that lighting plan. So minor comments, I think they're not, um, uh, expensive to do, uh, fortunately. And I and I think they they would, if they could be met, they would better meet the TOD, um. Landscape design guidelines, uh, of the city. So that I think is the, uh. The the review from us.
Uh, question for Attorney Suchi. Um, more and more people are, um, using e-bikes. Um, was that taken into consideration, uh, when you, when the space for, uh, bikes was designed? You know, given the possibility of a fire caused by one of those batteries?
I'm go, excuse me, I'm going to have to defer to Colin, but I believe that question was raised by the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had some, um, we had some discussions with Fire Marshal Donahue. And we addressed them in revised plans. Am I right?
Um, the, you know, been with Lance, were you? I don't know, uh, I don't know if, um, I'm sorry, I wasn't party. I wasn't involved in those conversations, but I I would say that, you know, any, uh, any hazards related to. You know, those, uh, the bicycle storage can be addressed generally with sprinklers. Um, usually what we see and I've heard this conversation, I've had this conversation with multiple fire officials in different districts these days. And and, um, also fire protection engineers, uh, the the general approach seems to be just increasing the sprinkler density if that's a concern. Uh, and they really just, um, you know, pour the water on, uh, until that can be can be dealt with. So, um, you know, the e-bikes, uh, at the moment, I don't know that we're making any specific accolades for them for charging them. Um, but it's, uh, I don't believe it's a requirement in the zoning regulations to provide e-bike charging. Um, but it would be stored just like a regular bike. And if it's under a building, uh, the entire building is required to be sprinkled. And if it was a concern, we can address it with sprinklers.
Commissioner Schulman, I'm I'm not sure if, um, and Chairman Wells, I'm not sure if this commission is inclined tonight to. Close the healer hearing and then act at a subsequent meeting or close and act this evening. But if it's of concern, I can certainly share with you whatever Fire Marshal, uh, Donahue had raised in connection with EV charging stations. And e-bikes, if that would be satisfactory.
I wouldn't recommend that we we hold this, um, uh, open for that reason. Um, but I I, you know, for everyone's safety, I'd just like the answer. Because it's my understanding that water alone is not necessarily sufficient to put out a battery.
On the same thing, I'm just curious, did the fire department approve the height? Like what if the ladder truck needs to get under your building? It can.
The fire department has reviewed the entirety of the plan, including the MX, the the height of the access and egress.
They didn't want to go internal. They want to stay in the street with the trucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the other building kind of goes for, you know, the existing building goes well into the back of the parking lot. But anyway, I'm sure if the fire department approved it, that's. Yeah, I know. Yeah, they know what they're doing.
There were some comments by Mr. Silva tonight with respect to additional landscaping. And I think those address Mr. Fish's concerns. Uh, it has been increased. And then there was another one related to, um. Okay.
Yeah, there is an email from the Fire Marshal proving the plants and part of the record.
Um, just regarding the material of the building, you've kind of put a little sample. Is it the same as the building next door since I don't want to assume, but did this applicant, they own the entire property?
Correct.
Did this applicant built that other building?
No, it did not.
No.
The the building that exists on Raymond Street was built by Spinnaker. But, um, Colin, could you, um, clarify the building materials?
Sure. It's, um, it's similar. So it's in the same vein. It's a little bit of a twist. So one, that was one of our challenges, you know, in in the design phase was we we really, you know, tried to keep things similar. But play a little theme and variation. So the existing building is kind of a corrugated, um, you know, ribbed metal panel. Uh, architectural cladding. Um, we kept that material, uh, used it for the, uh, the gable. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not actually sharing the screen, am I? Put that back up. All right. Um, so as you can see kind of up here, right, this is a similar material to what was used in the facade cladding of the existing building. We kept that up here. That's this dark gray, uh, ribbon metal panel. Uh, and then we've also tied in there's some wood accents in the recesses and then as part of the stairwell. It's this extruded simulated wood grain cladding, uh, that was used for the stairwell and those accents. So we're bringing it similar material, uh, and using it for the stairwell, uh, to create that accent. And kind of, you know, tie those two buildings together is similar but different. Uh, we are using this, uh, smooth gray, kind of a a modern brick, uh, for this this portion of the building. Um, but we're keeping the wind, the same fenestration pattern as the existing building. So, uh, kind of tying it together with the windows, but altering the material with the brick. Uh, and that's how we're, we're kind of achieving some cohesiveness within the site, um, but differing. And then just to kind of, um, answer Mr. Fish's comment. Uh, where's the elevation? So the window or the simulated windows here and this this patterning, uh, we've got those materials identified. Uh, the number one material is that gray brick. Number four is the, uh, fiber cement panel in iron gray. And then the number five is the, uh, fiber cement panel in light gray. And if you want an example of kind of how that's, uh, gonna look. Uh, this is the, um, Sona Central Building that was done by Spinnaker Partners. So very similar, uh, concept was done there. The fiber cement panels have joint lines that are visual and create some definition of the wall so that it's not a a blank wall. Uh, and then you've got these panels that, you know, from from the air, from the far kind of read as windows. So if you're down, maybe do Manny's little trick and drop down on the street and see if Google can throw the truck down. So you can see that it, there's some some visual interest there and you've got some pattern making. Uh, you know, one of the things that's challenging with the art that was brought up is that, um, sometimes that's, that takes a while to materialize. And then, you know, the intent of the zoning with the zero lot line is that eventually, especially on street frontage like this. That another building is brought up to, uh, to to be a button of this building and then continue the the street wall and the pedestrian realm. So, you know, you don't want to do too much because, uh, eventually you're hoping to have a building there. That's gonna continue the pedestrian environment and the streets get. Well, I've got you. Uh, I've, uh, one question about the transformers or zoning staff. I believe the requirement to conceal the transformers and the refuse is only applicable when they're visible from the frontage. Um, is that direct and doesn't, wouldn't apply internally to the site?
I have to, I don't know, top of my head, I have to look.
Okay, so that'd be my one question on that, um, but.
We did think, I would just say, we were not commenting so much on the zoning, but the the detail of the zoning. But the thought that the design guidelines mention that and that it was a good idea.
Yeah, and and if it's if it's necessary, we don't, I'm sure we don't have any problem adding, uh, adding some screening to the to the transformers. I just wasn't sure if it was actually required. Um, and I didn't have any other things to really respond to.
Do you mind addressing the, uh, plantings on the on the frontage and whether it's grass or shrubs or should?
He should, he should go to, uh, to Manny's plan. He can talk about those more in depth. And I think the response to the memo that we issued, uh, today or. Remember what it was? He described it as, uh, mountain laurel and, uh, low Yew trees.
Yeah.
Is that right Manny?
Yeah, I I could put it if you let me, I'll share. Yeah.
Thank you.
So Manny Silva again from Roastizo. Um, so as Colin, so we have some. Mount, uh, as you can see here, we, uh, we added on some shrubs here to the plant list. We added six, uh, mountain laurels and then an additional, I think it was nine, uh, spreading Yews. Um, so the detail that the architecture has is kind of some planter boxes that come off of the stairs that come up to the, to here to this, uh, platform. Before you get into the building. And then we have another planter box here. So we have some Yews here right by the sidewalk that kind of spread low. And then we'll have the mountain laurels up on the planter box up high. Same thing here. We have the Yews down low. And then we're that open area kind of here, uh, where between the buildings, we have some mountain laurels spread out. Um, and mountain laurels are kind of like a, uh, small, uh, shrub, maybe two, three feet high. They have a white flower with a, with a, uh, kind of a yellow orange, um. I forget the name of it now, part inside of the flower. Um. Yeah. Yeah, yep, there you go. And then, um, as far as the fencing, we did, uh, see the comment, uh, from the reviewing, uh, party. And then we we added, we added the 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 fencing here to the backside. Um, the transformers will be here as long as Snu, we have some, I'm sure Snu will have some requirements on the on the, uh, screening of the transformers. But we can definitely do that. Um, and then the, um. The actual tree wells, these are existing tree wells on Day Street. We, uh, we showed them there. Um, again, they were missing, uh, we just, we we showed them. Um, but again, um. Day Street has a bunch of tree wells here that was put in when, um, just after we finished this building and we raised this intersection. Um, and I think that was all the things we had to talk, oh, yeah, and the, um, we did slide the. Handicap spaces here, uh, a little bit over to to give that bike storage some more room here, uh, underneath the building. And then on the lighting plan, um, we had kind of an error in the CAD and we repaired, we fixed it. Um, here is the point to point. Um, sometimes you do contouring or 3D thing. But these little dots here are actually the fixtures themselves and where they're going. Um, usually you see like a little square and then the dot, but because these are, uh. You know, just a pole with a fixture on top of the pole itself. It's not like a shoebox fixture. That's why it's just shown as a dot. And then under the building itself, the cans are these little rectangles, uh, so like the LED blade. That's actually underneath the, uh, the building itself. So, um, I think that was all the things. Um, if there's anything else, just let me know. Thank you.
I would say Manny, uh, has responded to, uh, our, our, our comments, uh, on that shrubbery in the front. I I thought so, but I wasn't sure. That's why I asked the question. But I would think that it would be best to, um, just, uh, make the two plans. That is the engineering plan, the site civil plan and Colin's, um, uh, site plan. Uh, those shrubs ought to be shown, I think, on the site plan. The same with the fence, uh, on the western and and probably it's relatively easy to do. Just coordinate the two plans.
New mission. Yep. Okay. Um, and then the the last thing I had was on the, um, on the tandem parking. Um, so my understanding is, uh, there's a request for a waiver for the eight spaces. Um, though if the ten tandem spaces weren't counted as tandem spaces, they could be ten parking spaces and have green space there. So can, um, yeah, could provide some detail on why the choice for tandem spaces versus regular parking spaces? I don't know if that's a question for you, Attorney Suchi, or for someone else, but.
Well, we can't fit the ten spaces as independent parking spaces anywhere else. They have to be. There's no other room on the site to fit those ten tandem. If if that man, I don't, I may not be in understanding your question.
So when 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 we're saying tandem, are we? Are we counting? Oh, so only that bottom row is counted as the ten tandem. See, I thought it was the double stack is the, okay, so I thought that was. Okay.
They would.
I understand that. Right, but that would, that would only remove the tandem piece. It would change the eighty-eight. The eighty-eight is including the top half.
Right.
I misunderstood. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, that's all I had.
Yes, please. This has to do with the building that you're going to be taking down in the front that now houses, uh, bicycles on the bottom. I'm not sure what's on the second floor. Um. Are the current owners of those bicycles people that live in the existing building?
Yes, and the bike storage that's proposed would be for those in the existing building and in the new building first come first serve. Those of the bike storage would be available to all residents.
Okay, so it will be replaced, in other words, and and those people that have their bikes there now will be able to have.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You have to forgive me. I was not, I hope I wasn't being rude, sending texts. Some of the questions that were asked, I was trying to get answers from our consultants. You were asking.
That's, and you might have said the answer to my question before. I'm sorry, I might have missed it.
Should we, uh, go to the public? Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody is done with their questions. Okay, we'll start the public hearing. Uh, again, you.
you only get to speak once. But so say everything you want to say, what you are speaking. Give us your name and address, please. And the first person they come up and, and speak.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me? Yeah, great, great. My name is Emily Kelton and thanks for the opportunity. I live at 19 Day Street, apartment 502. And thanks for the opportunity to speak with you and share my thoughts. Also, thank you for being here and staying so late. It's really very much appreciated because this is, what the work you do is so important with, as, as from the other hearing, it, it's about home, it's about our homes, it's about where we live. And it's about, it's about what can happen, you know, to your, to, to your, to your, your home. And in this case, so anyway, I moved to 19 Day Street at a year and a half ago. And I, it seemed like a great idea at the time. I, I've truly enjoyed my life up here up to now, have great neighbors, quiet apartment in a great location. It's enabled me to visit my children and grandchildren in India and California by just shutting the door without worrying like I had before when I owned a house in East Norwalk. So I let's see. So my, me and, and the other residents of the building are here today to oppose our management's proposal to build the 32 unit, six story high building at 19 Day Street. I'd like to enter, to have the other people who live in this building have come here to, have come here to oppose and, and speak, just stand up for a second. So firstly, th- this has been entered into, I feel, this whole proposition, application has been entered into in bad faith. Just found out that since 2021, before Alpha 5 MK even owned the building, which they just bought, which they just took over in January, I believe. They had already hired somebody to do a site investigation for viability study for doing this building that they're now proposing. The engineering report was filed on 5/22/2325. The neighbors bordering the new parking lot were informed this summer. And guess how, guess how I found out? I found out because I, a neighbor who happens to be adjoining the park, the proposed parking lot where 14, Sono 1420 is now, said to me, hey Emily, do you know what's happening with your building? And I said, no. And then I, I found out exactly what's happening with, with, with our building and, or, or could happen. So I, I, I feel that the people, us tenants who were the, were kind of the last in October, they, after I had, so I had sent a, you know, a notice around to all the other tenants because I thought it was not right that here we are completely in the dark about what is being proposed. And only in October was something put out by the, by the management company. So the, a- and, and still the, now the applicants, so then now the apartments are still being leased to people, I, when I was telling people what was happening and, and giving them, you know, the, the heads up. One family was just moving in and they said, why didn't they tell us about this? We didn't know that, that, you know, that there's a proposal to build, to build a, to build another building 20 feet away from our living room window. So I really feel that it wasn't, i- i- it, it wasn't done in, in good faith with us. Now there's a unique aspect to this project. I know Norwalk is trying to develop, increase development and even giving concessions like about parking spaces as a result. But it is, this is a different type of project. Most are, I think, are in vacant lots where they can, you know, be fenced off. There, and, and this is not, this is not that. This, this is a, we're going to have the construction. Our, our, our parking lot is basically going to turn into a construction site. And with the construction vehicles and the construction equipment taking over our parking lot. And meanwhile, you know, we have been, in our leases, we haven't guaranteed one parking spot for, we can guarantee it in our leases, one parking spot for each, each unit. And so I'm wondering in the question that I'm going to ask the applicants are, well, we're not going to be able to park in our parking, in our, in our, in our lot. And we've been guaranteed a space, so where, where are you going to put us? Where are we going to be able to park? There's no parking nearby on the streets. So I would like a guarantee from the, you know, applicants telling us where we will be parking that's close to where we live. Also, the work. So it is going, and it's not going to be happening 300, 300, what, where was it? 300 feet away from like in the pen of proposal? This is happening 20 feet away from our front, our windows, our front door. It is going to be jackhammering, like, you know, for, they're going to have to demolish the buildings. They're going to be taking, trying to build a foundation. And going down, and the, the, the noise is going to be beyond, beyond. I work at home, I, I won't be able to work in my apartment. And so it's, it's definitely going to mean that I have to go some, find somewhere to work. There's going to be dust and debris that's flying into our windows. And it is, and the quiet environment that we are, that Ms. Su, you made reference to in our tenants' rights. It's not going to be a quiet environment that we need to protect ourselves against our fellow tenants. It's against our landlord who is, who's going to, you know, ear splitting jackhammers, metal saws, cement mixers, that crusher, boom, boom, the crushers all day long. And so it's, and we haven't really heard from the applicant about how long, other than it's going to be a multi-year project. So this, this raises, this raises issues about how long the, the tenants can survive putting up with this right in our, right, you know, in front of us. Not only will our lives be compromised for years, but so will the whole neighborhood. The inevitable, I know there was a traffic study about how many people come in and out of the exit. That's not the concern here. The concern here is that the inevitable congestion of school buses and city buses, construction vehicles, cars and trucks, all using narrow Day Street. There will be safety concerns for pedestrians and cyclists and access to our building for emergency vehicles, maybe, and fire trucks, like you mentioned, Tammy, maybe, maybe limited to. How, how are they going to get in? Because the entrance is, is under the building and it's, it's under the building. And there's no state, we haven't received information about the clearance between, you know, the, the road and the, where the second story, you know, starts. So will they be able to get in, in an emergency? Who knows? And plus the, the parking lot's going to be completely littered with, with construction material and equipment. So I, I suggested that, that you, you ask for a traffic study that doesn't track, doesn't cover, you know, coming, coming, how many people come in and out of the, the building. But one that really studies the street and what's going to happen on, 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 on Day Street. Because it's going to be a disaster. It's going to be really a disaster. So also the, I have a question too about the, the store, the demolition of the, the building of the foundation. I'm, I'm, I'm a landscape, I'm a landscape designer. I own a company, Great Scapes. I've owned it for 23 years, based in New Canaan. I know, first of all, I don't think that shrubs are going to grow under a covered building at all, but there's other, there's other, there's other problems here. Potential problems, which is if you build a foundation for a house, you have to go down 42 inches, 42 to 48 inches to build the foundation. I don't know what the, what the, what buildings, how far they have to be excavated. But I do know that we, Water Street, it floods all the time. And we have the problem of being a thousand feet or whatever it was from, from the, from the harbor. And the, the question of groundwater could be a real, could be a real problem when you're going down to, to build a foundation. They, and, and, and groundwater, you know, is our lifeline sort of. And if you interfere with the groundwater when building a building, and I don't even know how that works, how you've set the pile, you know, the, the, the foundation in a, if there's a possibility of hitting groundwater. But it's not a, i- i- I think there needs to be another environmental study about, about before, you know, about building this building. I also wanted to say that the okay, so there's also the, the demolition of the, of Sono 1420 Distillery, which is, it's a neighborhood gem. It's in a landmark building, a 1945 building. It's welcoming to all and it's a place to kick back after a hard week. And you really want to allow the applicant to do as Joni Mitchell warned, to pay paradise to put up a parking lot? I hope and pray that I, for one, will be able to keep patronizing Sono 1420 instead of watching it destroyed by a wrecking ball. So now to the subject which we're actually here for, which is about parking relief that they're seeking. So it's, it's too bad that the, I mean, I, I completely understand the concessions that have been made to allow a developer to, to reduce the number of required parking spaces by the, by the workforce housing and by the proximity to the train station. I think that makes perfect sense for building, putting up new buildings with new parking lots. Doesn't really apply to this where there's an existing building with existing tenants and, and existing and lots of cars. So the, the fact is here that the, yes, so so the yeah, so the section 4312B4 of the zoning regulation stipulates that a property within a quarter mile from the South Norwalk Train Station can reduce its parking requirements up to 10%. Well, you know, that's definitely favoring the developer, but there aren't enough parking spaces for the residents of 19 Day Street now. We have no assigned spaces for residents or visitors and several of our 56, I thought there were, Michelle had told me 57 units. Several of them own two cars. And because for being couples or, or roommates in those, in those units. And so parking spaces sometimes are already at a premium. And now they want to build a building that is going to be could add another 40 people, which is what I figure the 32 plus the couples looking to find parking spaces. So that if this application is approved and this building is built, 100 to 120 cars from two buildings will need to find parking spaces. And so this is, you know, that's not going to, it's not going to be possible for us. We, here we've been guaranteed spaces as we have a bike room that who knows if it's going to be built big enough to accommodate all our bikes plus the bikes from the other building. So I, I, I don't relish the, 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 the possibility, probability of having to first move out of the parking for, for the reconstruction, during construction, move my car out to who knows where, even though I've been guaranteed a parking spot. I, I don't relish having the construction site 20 to 30 feet away from our front doors. And the noise is, is, the noise, the dust, the debris, the disruption to our lives when they cut off the utility lines to work on something. This is not, this is just not right. Because it has to be, I, I understand about the wanting to build more buildings. But there's also the livability factor to keep in mind too, that how, how we're being affected by a developer who wants to, you know, build more units. And, and with the, with the parking spaces that we, with, and seeking parking relief because which, you know, they, they might get the 88 spaces and then, but we're left being the ones who have to suffer, who have to then try to, try to find spaces. And so I think it may end up being a parry victory for the, for the or the applicant here because if you know, i- i- if our lives are so, are, are, are so inconvenienced and our, our lives can't, can't function, you know, how, how we're living right now in our apartments and in, in our, in our building. We're, we're going to, we're going to leave. And even though there is a buyout clause, we would have good reason to, to challenge that and, and, and leave because it's not, you know, humane to subject us, that wasn't what we signed up for in our lease, to have a new building you know, 20 feet away and the noise, incredible noise of the jackhammers and everything else. So I thank you for your time and I hope you will oppose the wave, the request to, for the, for the spaces which I need to go forward with this project. Also a word about the tandem spaces. They are a joke, basically. They are right, right behind two, two rows of spaces with no exit for, no, the backspace is against the property line, there's no way out of them. It's, you should even have them as part of the proposal is, is, is in my, is in my mind ridiculous. And so please, please consider us, all of us when making your decisions about whether this project should go forward or not. Thank you.
If there's anybody at home on Zoom that wants to speak, you can use the raise your hand function.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Fandell. I'm the resident in apartment 504 of Norwalk, 19 Day Street. Good evening. My name is Lisa Fandell. I'm the resident in, uh, apartment five zero four of Norwalk, uh, nineteen Day Street. And I have to apologize for my frustration, but it seemed like this hearing has been about anything except parking. We've gone through shrubs, we've gone through the site plan. I don't know if this is a two per owner, like maybe we can take care of that along the way, but I, I gotta tell you, this is, this is of paramount importance to me and to the other tenants that, that does not go forward. When I was sitting hearing, uh, the other, uh, issue being brought by, um, the residents uh, before us. It, it, it just seems like there's been so much that's going on already that we're an afterthought. And quite frankly, you know, the reminder that you can't take into consideration our emotions. I think that says it all about what this, this is building owner is about. First of all, I don't think we should be talking about parking places and, and these exemptions or these favoritisms that they want because of zoning. I think we should be talking about where are we going to park? Where is the plan by the owner that says how are they going to accommodate the current residents under their obligations in the lease to guarantee us one parking space each? That doesn't even cover the two, uh, the second car option that they have offered and they are currently collecting money from people so that the residents of the current building can have, uh, a two-car residence. So I thought that that would be first and foremost, something that they would have to present and show, okay, how are you going to treat, how are you going to meet your obligations to your current tenants as far as parking? I haven't seen anything. I, I don't know how you propose to get around us being able to park in our lot to just displace us. I, I haven't heard anything. I think that's a preliminary discussion before we even get into the, the amount of spaces to be provided in the future. I'm afraid that once you open Pandora's box, like I saw in the last hearing, they can come back and say, oh, well, it was a bad plan, but here's our new plan. And how many bites of the apple do they get? Because once Pandora's box is open, I saw those poor residents trying to fight for their life while somebody's promising something else and not being held accountable for what they didn't do in the first place. Oh, by the way, they said they would. So before this goes forwards, I'd like to hear some, some promises and some commitments as to how are you going to do that and provide us with parking spaces on our lot? It's a breach, it's a breach of contracts. It's a breach of the lease. So talk about good faith. Let's talk about bad faith for a second. I renewed my lease. I've been there four years. I renewed my lease in May of this year. They knew before I, before I signed up for renewal, what was going, what they were going to do. Didn't mention it to me. Even upped my rent. And so now I'm facing that construction site on the fifth floor. My air conditioner already, uh, is, is wide open to the outside air. And I get dust the war. Are you kidding me? Can you imagine the increase in dust? Can you imagine? I've already got an air purifier. What, I'd get five of them? I mean, I'm not being, uh, I'm not being facetious here. To, to handle that amount of noise, dirt, rubble, flat tires. This is, this has been, this has been a steamroller by, by this company. And, and where were our certified letters? And who would be more affected? I, I get property, adjacent property owners, certainly I respect their issues. But what about the residents? We found out in, like, oh, by the way, manners, just by accident. Doesn't that show the intent of this company? They don't care. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting too emotional now. Sorry. Um, okay, so let's say all of a sudden they start the construction. They are basing the amount of, uh, parking places that are proposed based on, the only way they can get to that number is to get to these, well, first of all, misrepresent that all of the, um, the, um, the new buildings are going to be one, one car per unit when they're multifamily dwellings and some of them are fifteen hundred square feet. Are you going to commit tonight that you are going to only rent to one person per unit? So that there's adequate parking for that, for that tenant? Or are you going to offer a two-space option? Because you know, you know, there's going to be couples in there, can be couples with a, with a teenager. They can't get to that number be, unless they fess up that there will be no two-space options in that new building or in our building. That blows their numbers out of the water. So I'm afraid what's going to happen is they're going to, they're going to skate through this and then it's not going to be policeable. They could change the floor plans, they could make more units in their next, their third plan. They, it, it all boils down to good faith. How do I trust these people? They, they have outskewed any kind of accountability to, right now. Matter of fact, they even didn't stay on subject, the, the both of their hearing presentations is about facial things. These are people. We have, we have a lease. How dare you? I'm sorry, I'm back into emotion. Excuse me. Okay. So anyways, bad faith, I say, as far as anybody that, that has signed a lease when they have anticipated and they have gone forward with site plans without telling people. All right. I really didn't see any presentation showing the parking places. I saw lights, I saw, uh, tandem parking places, but I didn't see little squares for all the parking places as they promised. I don't even, how do I know? How do I know that they're going to fit? I would love to see a parking plan in architectural drawings so we could look, here, here's what we want. How are we going to get, here's how we're going to get it, other than this decrease in discount? So this is a different situation, like Emily alluded to, and I won't go chapter versus my deal on. But I don't know how you can take an existing lot, existing obligations to your tenants, then all of a sudden level away from those obligations with a new building so that you're trying to fit two buildings for as many parking spaces and, and to an existing lot. There is no purchase of a new lot. They're going to try and blow those down a historical building, but they're talking about tandem parking places or, uh, electrical car spaces and hit spaces. They're not, we're not, they say first come, first served. Okay, can I park in, in a, uh, electrical station parking lot with my gasoline car? Probably not. So those are conditional parking spaces. Anyways, I could go on a lot longer, but I know poor Mr. Archibald has, has got a real stake in the deal. So I would just close by saying that there's no way to police this. Can you trust them as far as you can throw them? I can't. And, and what is this all about? Money. Takes the emotion out of it. Sure. Uh, let's see, well, we'll do ten percent because it's such a great idea. We love the idea of, um, you know, mass transit. That's just a subterfuge. These people want to decrease the amount of services that they've been leased and obligated to do so to meet their greedy little ends. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. I'll, I'll keep this brief. Uh, my name is Ted Dumbalt. Uh, my address is twenty-six Cove Avenue in Norwalk. But I'm also the, uh, founder and majority owner of Sono fourteen-twenty Distilleries, which is located in building A of nineteen Day Street. So I'm here today not to, um, I want to go on the record that I'm not opposed to uh, development and, and progress in the town of Norwalk. In fact, I was benefited from that, uh, almost ten years ago. Um, when I first came up with this idea for this business, I was quickly introduced to Clay Fowler of Spinnaker Partners and Bruce Beinfield of Beinfield Associates. And they, uh, very quickly, um, convinced me that my, uh, business would fit really well in the redevelopment of, of nineteen Day Street. I assume most of you are long-term residents of, uh, Norwalk and know what a blighted area nineteen Day Street was a part of. So I'm, I took a big risk with my business and, and locating it in this uh, dilapidated building that was going to be part of a construction zone as they build out the apartment, uh, buildings at, in nineteen Day Street. So I signed the lease, the fifteen years lease in two thousand seventeen. Uh, took us about two years to get, uh, opened in two thousand nineteen. And ever since then, uh, we've been a, a big part of the community and we've built a lot of, uh, brand equity in our business. Um, and got lots of, of fans, both, uh, our neighbors and people from far across the country. Um, however, um, one thing that does concern me about this, this proposal and even more concerned after hearing some of the, uh, comments from Attorney Succi earlier tonight is the way that our landlord has treated not just, um, uh, the other neighbors, but myself. So it was a little disingenuous when, um, we, we heard earlier tonight that uh, the landlord, uh, had communicated with me about his, his proposal. And in fact, I found out about this proposal, uh, when a newspaper reporter called me and said, hey, do you know that, uh, the plan is to tear down your building? And I said, nope, didn't hear about. So at that point I called the landlord and he assured me that, no, this, don't worry about it, nothing's going to happen. And meanwhile, by looking at all the documents that are, uh, part of the tonight's agenda package, going back to as, as early as, uh, January two thousand twenty-one, it was in his, uh, plans to, to, uh, add capacity to this, um, this, this property. And again, I'm not against, um, uh, development and, and, you know, he's a business guy and he's a smart guy and he made an investment and this is a way for him to maximize his, his investment. But what concerns me is just the way that he has treated myself and the other residents by not uh, being upfront about what he was doing. And so I would just caution this committee that be very careful about how this, uh, proposal was presented by this landlord and the promises that he may or may not make to this committee because my experience is he can't be trusted. So that's all I say. Thanks for your time.
Hello. I just want to say, uh,
Just give out name and address, please.
Oh, sure. My name is Mateo Flores. I live in nineteen Day Street at unit one oh four. So I live on the ground level. I am facing the parking lot. When I open my window, I will be facing the construction and the dust could be getting into my unit. That is one of my concerns. Also, I did not receive a notification of this construction. Emily, who's been a trooper on this, is the one that informed me about this. She's the one that posted a sign and put, uh, paper saying everything to everyone about this. No, that I have received nothing. I heard that they said they posted a sign at Raymond Street. We mostly enter from the parking. Raymond Street is the only ti- I only go on Raymond Street when you go to New York City. That is it. So we were not properly informed of this construction. So, and I have lived here for two years. I've generally been happy with what's going on, but not with this. I had moved a couple months ago and we have both separate cars. I park in the parking lot, she parks in the street parking. So yes, we are concerned about parking if this was to develop. I'm not sure if they really like answered any of our questions on it, but I just want to make this, this committee aware. And thank you so much for your time and I really appreciate you listening to me.
Okay, any, anybody online, um, you can use the raise your hand function.
My name is Amy Couch. I live at nineteen Day Street, apartment four oh seven. Um, communication does not exist. I will confirm that with our property management and us, we receive nothing. Um, nothing. Um, even for smaller issues such as bedbugs, we've received nothing until days later. Maintenance requests, no response. This just can go on and on. This is a major, obviously a major development with still no communication. Um, parking is already a problem. I will echo. And oftentimes we are left to park on the entrance slab of concrete close to the, you know, the front, the side door there. Um, because there is nowhere else to go. So I don't know where they're going to recreate parking spaces in such a small space that doesn't really exist. And, um, so that's just, I don't foresee that. That's not possible. And I am a STEM educator. I've worked through the, these designs once I saw them. Um, newly saw them. These lack of spaces and new construction, a further imposition as we would have to walk more of a distance during this construction time that is difficult for some, for some of us, myself included. Uh, property management, um, continues with these, um, lack of communication, whether it's through uh, failure to email, failure to listen to a voicemail, to call you back to, um, when you do finally reach someone, their false promises and no really explanations. Um, there have been voiced concerns of security on the floor for attempted break-ins. There are zero follow, follow-up on false, um, promises for staffing issues. The second half of what I want to share with you about, um, this concern is um, the possible loss of, um, this business that we patronize in our neighborhood. This Sonoma fourteen-twenty, as you're well represented. Um, the, this business serves as a community gathering space. It is important for so many people. It's historic in its own right. It's a neighboring, like, um, space for us to all make those connections. It's important to us. And as residents of that building right next to it on the same property, right, I just, it's, it's so funny how it's like to the property management, to the applicant, how it's an afterthought to let us know, to let them know, to let Ted know. And to understand that, you know, to emphasize that this is not easily replaceable. And earlier it was stated that, um, uh, that, you know, businesses are promoted, businesses like, we promote new businesses. That's what the statement was. We promote new businesses to, you know, further, um, patronization in the city of Norwalk. And as a somewhat new resident to this city last December, I love the area. However, I don't understand if the emphasis was to promote new businesses, why are we getting rid of one that people love so dearly? To, like, in the same paragraph as, you know, to further patronize, why are we, you know, have these people, um, celebrate these open spaces of, you know, gathering? We're getting rid of one to possibly create just some parkings, uh, some other housing structures that are really going to cause such an inconvenience. It's like such an understatement. I don't understand the math. And I'm also a math educator. I, I And I'm also a math educator. I, I don't understand that. So these plans, they're, they're not working. I, I don't understand that. I don't understand where people's empathy and the lack of the vision for seeing people, for other people's perspective, it doesn't seem like that took place. So I'm glad that you're all here to, like, hear us out, because it really is important to us. And, you know, and I appreciate your attention. And for all of you, for your eye contact, I really appreciate that. It means the world. Because I can tell that you are all, you know, taking this into consideration. And by these plans, not only are you potentially losing some of the, the people, the residents, that might be moving, maybe moving elsewhere, right? That we love the city so dearly. But if we are forced to, you know, be unhappy where we are, and it might be unsafe for us to be there health-wise if the dust is coming in, right? If we can't walk to where we need to get to, to get to our car for several months on end or years potentially. Like, this is a real concern. And, and the other half of that, like I was saying, is the concern of loving a business, right? That is not really like a business anymore. It's become like a staple. There are so many people that walk by that are on their way from far away that are so excited to visit the distillery. And when you're there, you feel like you're part of the family. And just to, to say, to like reflect on what was stated by someone else tonight. You know, we promote businesses, but yet you're getting rid of one potentially. And it seems like this is so much farther along than we all thought, but we just found out about it. So you can understand hopefully and seeing our perspective why we are so taken aback by all of this. Thank you very much.
Hi, or good evening. My name is Linda Kavanaugh. I'm at one oh two Alton Road in Stanford. But I work at Nineteen Day Street. I am the marketing and public relations director for Sono fourteen twenty, America's maritime distillery. So to echo what Ted said, you know, the manner in which we found out about this was just, it was kind of flippant and, and, and all honesty and extremely inconsiderate. I'm the publicist for the company. I find out because my client is speaking to the media and I had no idea. It's embarrassing. It should be more embarrassing on, on the landlord's side. For us, it was just stating the truth that we were the last, the last to know. Sono fourteen twenty not only is that historic building important to us, and it does mean a lot to the neighborhood. The name of the company is, it's America's Maritime Distillery. So to say that we can just up and go and you could just find another place to do business, no. It's a maritime distillery. That waterfront location is important to us. It means something. The, the distillery itself, I heard someone before say that we're a bar. No, we produce product there. It, it's an operation. And then we also have the social, the public face, facing side to it. There's lots of layers here and we continue to grow. Now with us continuing to grow and now having this little, this little cog in the wheel is, is a little disconcerting to say the least. We've been adding layers to our business. And one of the layers, we actually have our new food service partner here. We actually partnered with a very significant Norwalk food service company, Lobster Craft. You know, we wouldn't probably have ventured in, into that if we had any idea that any of these challenges would be in front of us. So we are trying to grow. We're trying to grow with, with the neighborhood. The location is significant. You know, we're not an office, just an office with the laptop and we can just get up and go and rent another space. It is not that easy. So again, to echo with Ted said, I think the, the, the trust here was, was just lost. Miscommunication is, isn't an understatement. And the flippant approach should definitely be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Trent Reigenbach. I'm a resident at Nineteen Day Street, apartment two oh eight. I'll be brief here. I've, agree with everything everyone else has said here. I just wanna emphasize a few points I had some thoughts on. First off is the issue of construction of the new site. So we've been over just how that's gonna be bad for us here in Nineteen Day Street. But also keep in mind, we're not the only apartment complex in the area. I mean, you have, you have twenty day street, which is directly across Day Street from where the building is gonna be built. And then you have thirty day street, which is also pretty close nearby. So that's, it's like a good, like, a hundred, two hundred people who are gonna be in very close proximity of this construction. Gonna have to deal with this noise, all the debris coming through. So it's not gonna just be us. It's gonna be so many other people. And then I also wanted to bring up the whole issue of how they're gonna be reducing parking because we're so close to the train station. Now, it's, it's nice that we live near that train station. But the unfortunate truth is, is that Norwalk isn't really the most walkable city. Like, like, for example, I, like, I work in, I work in Wilton. And it's like, it's only like a ten, fifteen minute drive to get where I, to, to get there. So say I have to give up my car in order to continue living here. There is a bus route that goes directly to my office, but it's a forty, forty-five minute trip from Nineteen Day Street. And then also I have my mom who lives, lives in Pennsylvania. It's like a two and a half hour drive. And there's no easy, there is no easy, like, public transit route to get there. So that's more ways that would be difficult for me. And then on that, just all the points that's been brought up, like, yeah, the construction vehicles, they're gonna be in our parking lot. There's no clear plan on how people are gonna get in and out of the parking lot while the construction is going on. And then there's just a total lack of any communication regarding this. Especially with the company that's gonna be forced to relocate with this plan. Yeah, and just in conclusion, I don't see this as a project that's gonna benefit anyone but the developers. It's gonna make things worse for everyone in the area while it's being built. And it's gonna make things worse for people after it's built. Like, with like two, with two buildings in like the same parking lot, can we even like guarantee that like the people moving into a new building are in, be able to guarantee that they're gonna have parking spaces? But yeah, uh, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk about this. I hope you take this on with consideration.
Five and a half hours. God bless you guys. Tommy Gordon, I, I live in Wilton, Connecticut right now. But I, when I cycled back from Asia, I lived in Harborview for almost twenty-two years. Raised our family here and I, I don't know if I have anything extraordinary to say. One of you, the reason I love South Norwalk so much is because of people like you guys. You sat here for five and a half hours and listened to people argue about how to better this town. I think that's spectacular. It's why Lobster Craft started in, in South Norwalk and why we wanna keep it here. And with the potential teardown of the building that we're in right now, that's gonna be a challenge. And I find that unfortunate, but I also understand that progress is progress. But I really just wanted to extend gratitude for you guys caring so much about your town that you sit here and, and you spend so much time thinking about what's best for this, for this community. Not just what makes the most money, but what's best for the community. So God bless you all. Thanks.
Okay, have there any, have there any people online?
Yeah, last call if you're online. I'm gonna guess by some of the names, no, but you do have the opportunity if you raise your hand. I don't believe so. May I make a suggestion, manager?
Certainly.
I would say we hold off on rebuttal. That's okay with Attorney Succi. And then if you, it might make sense to open the third public hearing and immediately continue it. That way we don't have to re-notice it. And then you can decide whether you wanna do your vote on officers tonight or punt till the next meeting.
No, let's elect officers today.
Okay.
This is my last night.
We haven't taken the vote yet, Caitlin. We all have seen what happened. All right, I guess we return to, can we?
Yeah.
It's perfectly fine. You'll just close the public comment portion, leave rebuttal open for whatever meeting you move this over to. That's perfectly fine under those, those caveats. And of course, open the public hearing on the third matter for RMS Real Estate Group and proceed whenever you deem appropriate.
So, so we, we are close the public participations section. And are you doing your rebuttal now? I'm sorry.
No, we're gonna, can you see that next meeting?
Next meeting, we did the rebuttal.
Okay, the next meeting, we'll proceed with the rebuttal. Right, good. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
All right, move. We close the public hearing portion of the hearing and reserve the rebuttal for our next meeting.
Seconded.
Lead me to it.
Show of hands.
Those in favor?
Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
For coming out tonight.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for coming and thank you for your patience.
I just need a motion to open the last public hearing item and then continue that to, this will be November fifth at six P M.
Yeah. Move that we open the hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it again. Uh, to continue, yeah.
Right.
To continue.
To opening it.
To continue the RMS Real Estate hearing. So on, so on the fifth, you will do the rebuttal for the two forty-eight, two eighty-four can in Nineteen Day and you'll hear the public hearing for the sign.
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
We need a show of hands.
All those in favor?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Bye, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to election of offices. Diana?
Oh, yes. Nick Canter, Chair of the Nominating Committee, is not able to be with us tonight. But he has given me the information to impart. So the nominating committee, including Nick as Chair and Darius and I as members, present the following nominations for the Office of President Chapin Bryce, Vice President Galen Wells, and Secretary Lou Schulman. And that is.
Okay, our report. Are there any further nominations?
Yes, I'd like to make a nomination.
And me?
I said, yes, I'd like to make a nomination.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to nominate Lou Schulman to be the Chair.
I'm gonna decline. I think it's, it's time.
Oh my gosh, I said the wrong name. I meant to say Richard Rowena.
He is pretty good.
I'd like to nominate Richard Rowena to be the Chair. And my apologies for that.
No, that's okay. But you know what? I'll, I'll say the same thing that I was going to say. Which is I think it's time to turn the chairmanship over to some younger leadership. The rest of us are getting a little long in the tooth. And I'd, I'd like to personally, although Richard would be a fine Chair, would, would like, like to see Chapin's Chair.
Do you accept the nomination?
Richard, I think that's you.
Richard, do you accept the nomination?
You're muted.
It's okay.
By that, you mean?
Is that an affirmative?
I'm declining.
You declined. Okay, well then the.
Thank you.
People nominated for the patients are those selected by the committee. Should we, I think we should probably have a vote.
Yes.
Should we do a vote by a show of hands or a?
However, however you'd like to proceed. However you'd like to proceed, I think we, we can, I can do a roll call if you'd like.
Why don't you do a roll call? Because then there's no question.
All right, I'll start with Mr. Williams.
Sorry, are we voting on the entire slate at once or do you vote on each individual candidate?
I think you could do. I think we could vote as, as a slate since Richard rejected the nomination. Are there any other nominations?
Are there?
Yeah, three and a half, right?
All right, already did, but I'll ask it again. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I hear no other nominations. So with this, we'll do a roll call vote for those who vote for the slate that's been nominated. I mean, in political meetings, we call for other nominations. If there aren't other nominations, we instruct the secretary to cast a unanimous ballot for the nominated slate. We can do that here.
Our secretary is not.
I think.
But the secretary is here, so I think the safest thing is to just let everybody vote.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with doing it that way. So I think that's, everybody gets to vote and.
Yes, okay, everybody will vote.
And you wanna vote for the slate?
In every past election, we've moved the slate. I moved the slate.
Okay, good.
And I think according to our bylaws, Steve could act as a secretary.
Okay.
Promotion.
The slate, and that was their second, so they motioned for the slate?
Second.
Okay, seconded, and now we'll vote. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik, if you're still with us?
Nope, she hopped off.
Okay, Ms. Lingales?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you all. I appreciate it. It's late. I'm not gonna make comments, but I really appreciate it. Make a motion to adjourn? All right.
I'll second.
All in favor? Great. Thank you, Darius. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Thanks for hanging out.